And we are live.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to get our city council meeting kicked off this evening. We'll start with roll call. And I'll just call on you. You stay here. Amy Patillo.
Here.
Wendy Huntley.
Present.
Sarah Hudson. Already. Oh, oh, welcome. Wendy already making things difficult. You specifically said here and you're going with present. I love it.
I just, I like to, you know, make things up.
I like it. I like it. We're off to a rocket start this evening. Okay, so we were notified that both Gavin, unfortunately, both Gavin and Buck aren't going to be able to make it this evening. So we're going to be running a lighter dais, but we have some important stuff on the agenda and thankfully, though, considering some of our previous agendas relatively light. In any case, at this point, we're going to open up to public comments. So this is the time for anybody joining us this evening to comment on any item or thoughts that are not items otherwise on the agenda. We're going to request that you limit your comments to three minutes. Typically, just so that everyone's aware, we do not kind of do a question and answer in these scenarios. This is an opportunity again, for members of the public joining us to comment their thoughts on anything not otherwise listed on the agenda. If you're joining us on your laptop or mobile device, there's a little three dots down in the lower right hand corner of your of your zoom screen. Click on that and click the raise hand that will let the city secretary and our assistant city manager, Ashley Wayman, know that you're interested in speaking. Again, we're going to ask that everyone be respectful and hold your comments to three minutes. If you're joining us by phone. Actually, I always forget this. It's star six.
A star six is to unmute and star nine is to raise your hand.
Okay, so so first press star nine. That will give us an indication that that you wish to speak. You'll hear probably the last several digits of your phone number referenced in that instance, and then you'll know to press star six to unmute your phone. With that, we will open up for public comments. I don't see any hands raised. Do you, Ashley, see anything?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Do we have anybody joining us by phone just for reference?
We do not have anyone joined by phone.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what. We will then move on. We'll close our little public comments section. Just in case anybody wants to comment during additional agenda items, I will try to remind everybody of the process, but the process will be the same as we move forward to through the agenda. Next up, we have a
Here, sorry, I had to interrupt, but actually, is the person who has iPhone listed as their name, is that different than a phone?
It would come up as a phone number usually if it was calling in. I think they may be joined on their iPhone via the app, but.
Okay, just double checking since I saw iPhone on there. Thank you.
Okay. Well, whoever's joining us from iPhone, you, if you raise your hand to speak, you'll probably be referenced in that way. Don't take any offense to it, please. In in any case, and we'll we'll be at, we'll ask you to introduce yourself. Should you join for conversation for comment? With that, we'll open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing discussion, possible action on ordinance amending platting notice requirements. Council, we've, we've seen this. And we've actually discussed this previously. We requested that the planning and zoning take this up. Carrie Kayla rather has joined us this evening, and I might open the floor to her if she wants to give a little bit of context for the council.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. So last month, you all implemented an administrative plating approval process. In that were some changes to the noticing requirements that made it conform with state law. But there was a little issue with the way we posted the documents in relation to the how the items were listed. So Charlie brought this noticing requirement back in ordinance form.
Thank you. Thank you. Carrie, Charlie, is there anything that you would like us to to consider for this?
No, sir.
Specifically?
No.
In that case, council, I'll open the floor for your for any action.
So is the public hearing closed?
I'm sorry, that's a great point. Thank you, Wendy. Tell you what. That's, this is me being slightly out of practice or having a long day. Six thirty seven. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, this is the great time to again, click the the three dots. Click to raise your hand and we'll know to let you speak or to call on you. And if you're joining by phone, again, that is star nine. And then when you're called upon, star six. Okay, I don't see any hands. Ashley, do we have anybody?
No, sir.
Okay, well, in that case, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty eight. And now, Wendy, thanks again for the reminder. I will open the floor to any action from council.
I will make a motion to amend an ordinance. Or, let's see. To adopt the ordinance amending platting notice requirements as specified in our packet.
Okay.
Council, we have a motion from Wendy and a second from Amy. Discussion, council?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, so this replating eliminates the advanced notice to residents. Right, there, there's now no, unless there's a variance required, there's no notice to residents until after the plat's been approved.
There's I don't think there's ever been a requirement that the notice be provided after the plat's been approved.
That looks like that's what's in there now in the proposed ordinance. Right?
I don't know, staff, I mean, I'll have to read it, but I don't remember anything in the previous ordinance that required notice to be provided after the plat was approved.
No, there, in the previous ordinance, there was notice required before the plat was approved.
Okay, you said after.
No, now, in the, in the proposed ordinance, there's only notice required after the plat's been approved.
No, there's no notice required after the plat's approved. What this does is change the notice requirements to be consistent with state. Residents are still required to be provided notice for replats that are affected. The for replats where in the preceding five years, the area to replat it had main classification for residential use, or if it had a deed restriction for residential use. And so that's still in there and still required because it required, but it actually is required by state law, but we put it in the ordinance specifically so that everybody would be aware of it. So the notice requirements to residents in those instances is still required.
Okay. But there is no notice now provided before the plat is evaluated.
No, that that notice is provided before the plat is evaluated.
Only when there's a variance.
No, anytime a plat comes before the planning and zoning commission and the city council where the the area to be replatted was limited by zoning classifications for residential use or where there was a deed restriction for residential use. So anywhere we have zoning that is for residential use or there's a deed restriction where it limits it to residential use, notice to residents is required to be provided before the replating.
So on a typical lot in Rollingwood, would there be notice provided before the replat?
I would say the answer to that is yes, because the typical lot in Rollingwood is zoned residential.
Okay. And on the item on one oh five point three five on the on C, the item for variance. The requirements for legal protest where it says written instruments signed by the owners of at least 20% of the area of the lots or land immediately adjoining the area covered by the proposed replat and extending 200 feet from that area but within the original subdivision must be filed. How is anybody going to know what that means?
Oh, that's, I mean, that we have to comply with that anyway. That's that's state law word for word.
But we don't have to adopt it in their language, right? We cannot, can we not word this such that people reading it would know what it means?
I'm, my preference is that we word it exactly the way state law words it, so there's no confusion.
Well, I would say state law is very confusing. Well, so.
So, Sarah, if I, and Charlie, if I understand you correctly, and it's been quite some time since I I ever really properly practiced, but if we were to reword this, it's possible that our rewording could create some kind of confusion or legal and legal confusion or legal ambiguity per state requirement. Is that a fair, is it a fair assessment?
That's a, that's a fair assessment. That's why I, that's why I rarely word anything different than the way state law has it worded. If I'm using, if I'm putting state law requirements into our ordinances, I typically don't put state law requirements into our ordinances. But I felt, given the current circumstances, it was important to do so. You can strike this from your ordinance. It doesn't matter. We still have to comply with it.
Right.
Well, I'm just trying to make it clear to residents that if there is a notice, they if they receive a notice and somebody's trying to replat something and they have issues with it and they need to get people, you know, they need to rally their neighbors to object. And nobody knows what the original subdivision was.
Well, I mean, you can. That's going to be a public record. They have a methodology to learn that. As a matter of fact, Sarah, that's one of the things that were the projects that were undergoing. Right, with putting, you know, effort into better collect the data with regards to our mapping endeavors, right, putting an actual put again, one usable digital space for people to access to understand everything from, you know, easements to deed restrictions to you know, fill in the blank, right? And there there are a number of benefits. So exactly what you're speaking about is these are projects that are have already been undertaken by this council to help provide that kind of access and transparency to to the community.
And for purposes of this particular section, the citizens should get as many signatures as they possibly can from anywhere they can possibly get it with respect to the area surrounding their home. And then city staff will determine whether or not it meets the requirements of state law.
That puts a lot more work on the city staff.
Well, that's the way it works. I mean, we don't put the burden on the property owners to verify that the petitions that filed are required that are are consistent with state law. That's what staff always does. They always look at the signatures. They always verify this in compliance.
Okay, it just seems overly complicated. Trying to see if we could make it clearer to the residents.
So Sarah, I understand, I think, that the original subdivision is the language that you feel like is confusing to people. Is that correct?
That's the, a big part of it, yeah.
Okay, so I would say that when I read this, if someone were to come and ask me what do I need to do, I would say you need to go to all the neighbors that are within 200 feet. And if they need help finding out who the neighbors are that are within 200 feet, that's something that our city staff regularly have to pull up and identify. And so if they need help figuring out who the neighbors are that are within 200 feet, then I think that that's something that they can go to the city staff and get. But you could also use Google Maps. And there's a function where you can put a dot on a position. And then you can click to measure a distance. And you can create 200 feet and then just circle that around and see who all the people are within 200 feet of a property.
And then city staff will make a determination as to whether or not those signatures within the 200 feet are where within are 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 from places that were within the original subdivision. I mean,
200 feet wasn't the issue that I had. It was the, but within the original subdivision part because.
Right, well, the citizens only need to get, the citizens only need to recognize that they have to get signatures within 200 feet. And then if they can get everybody or as many people as they can within 200 feet of their home to sign petition, it's city staff will then determine whether or not they're within the, they either are or are not within the original subdivision. That fact cannot be changed. The staff, the staff will determine whether or not they were within the original subdivision. The citizen take it out, but then we'll have to be explaining to people why may not be acceptable because they are not within the original subdivision. And they'll say, well, that's not in the ordinance. So my preference is to leave it as it is so that it's clear to everybody with respect to what the obligations were.
Right, because just to clarify, Charlie, even if we remove it from the ordinance, it's still required by state law. So the staff would still have to do the determination of whether 20% are within the original subdivision.
That's exactly correct. And I agree, it's, you know, state law is always not always clear. But my preference again is to leave it consistent with the way state law reads it, so that we know arguments that we've adopted something different than state law.
Okay, it seems like we could make things more stringent than state law. And taking out the within the original subdivision would make it more stringent because it would be more inclusive, right?
That's a statement.
But I don't know if that's better or worse to make it more inclusive. It just makes it more clear. But it may not be an issue. It just, it just one of those things where it seemed like it is unnecessarily confusing. I have that problem with a lot of state regulations, so.
And and I do as well.
Okay. That was it.
Okay, appreciate it. Sarah, we have a motion. And a second, do we have any additional? Anything additional, council? Okay, not hearing any. I'll call, call vote then. Amy Patillo?
Hi.
Wendy Huntley?
Hi.
Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
Okay, the motion carries. Charlie, thank you very much for the work on it. And we'll move to the consent agenda. We have two items there. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to pass the consent agenda.
Wendy, you have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. Call for a vote on that. Amy Patillo?
Hi.
Wendy Huntley?
Hi.
Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody. We'll move to the regular agenda. On six, discussion possible action on a license agreement with I-9 Sports for use of the athletic fields. Amber, I understand that this was discussed in part at the most recent park commission meeting. And then we have we do have a subsequent letter from a park commissioner in your in your packet, council. I am happy to yield the floor to Amber for context. Wendy, your liaison. So Amber, how about we we let you you speak first and then Wendy?
Sure, actually, Justin Cannon is here. And so if we want to call him up at any point. And but
I'm sorry, just sorry to interrupt you, but just for the the sake of the audience, Justin Cannon is with I-9?
Yes, he's with I-9. And he's asking to do a day camp in the field. And I'll let him, you know, describe what he would like to do. I'll walk you through what happened at the park commission. They voted twice on this item. The first motion was to allow usage of all the fields during the hours proposed. And then the motion failed three to three. And then the next motion was to approve I-9 for use of fields one and for two during the hours they requested, and that motion passed four to one.
Okay, that's interesting. Why was the, sorry, just for the second, for the sake of clarity, did somebody abstain? For the second vote, there were six, six voters in the first and five in the second?
Well, one dropped off. Lori Mills dropped off. She had to go. And then the the one no vote was Nicole, and she voted no because she wanted I-9 to have use of all the fields, not just one and two.
Okay, did Lori vote?
David Raymond also dropped off, right?
He was not there for that item at all.
He he dropped off before that item because the meeting had been so long.
Got it. And so that's the letter that we have, letter to council. So he's what David, the crux of this lever letter is he's suggesting that it had he been, had he not had to drop, he would have voted favorably for the during the first vote that was deadlocked at three, three. Is that correct? So the implication being that that first vote would have passed four, three. Is that, is that a correct understanding of this letter? Amber, Wendy, you guys, sorry.
Yeah, so just for clarity's sake, I-9 is asking to use the athletic fields for their summer sports camps. The hours are nine AM to noon Monday through Friday, so it's 20 hours a week. Their rental fee is $75 per hour. So that means that it's $300 per day, $1,500 per week, or $6,000 total for renting the fields. Right now, the demographics for the kids using the fields are all Eames ISD kids. They average between 50 and 70 kids. If they have more fields, they can include more children in the program. Where I am on this is I do think that the majority of the park commission, based on David Raymond's email, is looking to prioritize the fields for the kids. And our deed restrictions for the fields, it says, it is the intention of grantor and grantee to provide for the preservation of existing athletic fields located on the property. Accordingly, the use and development of the property shall be restricted to park and recreational purposes consistent with the use of a portion of the property for four reconfigured, or I mean, for four baseball softball fields, which may be improved, reconstructed, relocated or reconfigured by grantee at its sole discretion. The use of the fields for baseball, football, soccer, and girl's softball by West Bank area associations, which are primarily for youth within Eames ISD School District, shall be given priority. So our ordinance for the constraint and confinement of dogs does allow for the fields to be used for other things when there are not organized activities going on on the fields. So I believe that the intent of the park commission was to leave builds three, four, and five open for use for the dogs for the off-leash dog area, which I think is a great use of our park space. However, I think the priority of the fields being given to the kids in Eames and in and primarily in Rollingwood, who actually do attend this summer camp is is what we are actually instructed to do with our deed restrictions. So I would make a motion to move to approve a license agreement with I-9 Sports for use of the athletic fields, one, two, three, four, and five for the times and dates in the license agreement as submitted in the agenda packet.
We have a motion from Wendy. Thank you, and both Wendy and Amber very much for the for the for the clarity. We have a motion from Wendy. Do we have a second to open the discussion, council?
A second.
I would just also say that basically, the two fields can serve about 40 people tops. And adding the third field would actually double the capacity of what that that summer camp can serve for those four hours a day, Monday through Friday. And again, it's nine AM to noon. And when the fields are not being, excuse me, when the fields are not being used, I'm sorry, three hours, when the fields are not being used, they are then open to be used for off-leash dog purposes. So I am in support of prioritizing our fields for kids first. And then when they're not being used for organized activities, then allowing the use of the off-leash dog use on the fields.
So council, we have a, and sorry, I froze up there for a second, but we do have a motion. Do we have a second so that we can bring this for discussion?
Oh, I seconded it, Mayor. You may not
Thank you. Yeah, and I apologize for just getting caught up on that. Okay, so as as you were.
I'm done. If anyone else wants to make a
Okay.
So what activities does I-9 include?
They have a flag football summer camp, and then they have a multi-sport summer camp for age group four through 12.
Are those co-ed?
Yes, they are.
I have a question. If the Parks Commission made a recommendation to only allow use of I-9 for a certain number of fields, why is the motion for all the fields?
I'm, I'm
The Park Commission, the majority of the Park Commission, yes.
Wendy, sorry, I'm not sure who was who was speaking.
It looked like it was Catherine Scott, but I would answer her, but I'll let you.
Sure, just, just, I was gonna say, just for the sake of, just for the sake of of the record, Catherine Scott. of the record, Catherine Scott, thank you. We got that, Ashley? Perfect. Okay, Wendy, go ahead, please.
Okay, I would say that people had to drop off of the park commission meeting because it ran really long. But if we counted the votes of the park commission, it was four to three voting to prioritize the fields for the kids. And so in our agenda packet, somebody who had to drop off, who wasn't able to vote because they had to leave the meeting, wrote a letter to the city council saying that had they been able to stay for the rest of the meeting, that they would have voted to prioritize the fields for the kids. That's in our agenda packet.
And that bylaws allow for email voting?
No, I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily what's been suggested. So it's not necessarily a passing or a retroactive vote.
It's a recommendation.
That's right. I defer to our city attorney on it, but I, I, I think you're correct. Ms. Scott, I do not think that that would necessarily be allowed in that fashion. I think it's more of a clarity sake.
I would also point out that I really value all of our commissions. And that as a matter of precedence, on most matters, when our commissions vote, it is a recommendation to the council, but it's not binding on the council. And so, for example, the Planning and Zoning Commission actually voted four, three in approval of us removing cedar elms from the tree ordinance. But the council did not take that recommendation. It was a split vote. It was very close, but it tipped in favor of removing that from the ordinance. And when the council looked at it, we balanced additional factors and we chose not to remove it. And so I think that especially when we have commission votes that are really close, I think that probably reflects that it's an issue where there are different people who have different opinions. And my hope is that, I agree with Wendy, that I think we continue to need to look at the deed and also prioritize then the uses of our fields for youth sports inconsistent with the deed. And so I would also say that this is three hours a day. And so it's prioritizing the fields for youth by use, use by youth sports for three hours a day during the summer, so that kids have organized programs they can go to. And I, I don't see that as overly burdensome on our community. I see there still is being opportunities for different uses of the field by others throughout the rest of the day.
Okay, Amy. I see that Marnie's, Marnie Fitzgerald. Go ahead, Marnie.
Hi all. I'm confused on the current lease terms that you already have with Western Hills baseball and softball, which the way I read it, they have all of that land every single day for 11 months out of the year for the next five years or something like that. So how does this work with another organization now leasing that land on top of them? Thank you.
The way that we set up the lease agreement, it's a different sort of agreement than what we had done in the past. There are prescribed periods when the Little League has priority use of the fields. And when they're not using the fields, then the city has the ability to lease out the fields. And when the city leases out the fields, like we're doing under a license agreement, then that money will stay with the park as opposed to with the Little League. So then the money goes back into the park to improve the fields. And that's, it is the way that it's set up on purpose. And that also just allows the city more flexibility to have more programming available for residents of Rollingwood.
Thank you, Wendy. Amber, in that vein, have we confirmed that the proposal from I-9 does not interfere with our contract with Western Hills?
I have spoken with Little League and the girl softball and they are supportive and have given permission. And I believe Steve Frank is actually with us tonight. If you would like to hear from him, he's available.
Okay, I think I saw his hand raised. Steve, if you're here, you can go ahead and unmute and love to hear from you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, so Justin with I-9 approached us originally. If, just on historical basis, the lease before this lease, evidently I-9 was an approved sub lessor that we could, in essence, at any time create a sublease with them. As Wendy mentioned, those terms have somewhat changed under this new lease. And so he approached us first about subleasing under our lease. A couple of the weeks were kind of under our term of lease. We don't have it a full 11 months. I think it's only like eight or nine. And then we only have it at certain times of the day. So before I even brought it to Amber's attention, I did get approval from both our board and Little League's board to you know, totally go behind I-9. You know, we're totally receptive to them using it during those times and, and the fields they had wanted. So that's when we brought it forward to Amber and told her that, you know, we were totally receptive and behind that lease.
Okay, so it's safe to summarize that then as Western Hills softball and Little League do not believe that the proposal from I-9 would in any way conflict with their rights under the existing lease with the city. With your, with Western Hills existing lease and with the city. Is that a fair summary then?
At those times, I think, because our lease, we do have it through the end of June and such, but it's not till 4:00 PM or after. So those times of nine to 12 are not really in our lease agreement is being under our control.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Steve. And Amber, council, do you have any other thoughts or questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, I saw Sarah raise her.
No, go ahead. You're good.
I just wanted to say that I, I want to clarify that I do value our community that meets up there with their dogs. I think it's an important part of our community. I think people have a very developed, great friendships up there. They meet every day. It's a great place to be outside. It's a great place to meet new neighbors. It is not at all to devalue that use of the park. But I do, I do think that we have to prioritize, when we have to prioritize the use of the fields for children, that we need to prioritize the children first. And I think it is also a good reason that we might have a separated off-leash dog park area that can be used when our fields are in use, so that there's always a place for people to go with their, with their animals. If we did have a dedicated off-leash dog area, then if the fields were being used and people might want their dogs on the, on the baseball fields, they would have a place to go with their dogs in a dedicated off-leash dog park area. So that, you know, is, I think this is a good example of as we're starting to have expanded use of our fields because of the way that we've structured our lease. And as we're providing more opportunities for the fields to be used by children in our community, that there may be less available time for people to have their dogs off-leash when these sort of programs come up. And so I, I don't want this to be like, you're against the dogs if you're prioritizing the the fields for the children, because I'm not against the dogs. And I'm not against the use of the fields for the dogs. But I do think that we have a conflicting use at times that we're going to have to make a decision one way or another. And I think our deed restrictions say we shall prioritize the fields for the children. And I think that we're required to do that within our deed restrictions.
Okay. Thank you. I want to make sure that, guys, I'm gonna try to keep us real tight on our subject matter here. And I certainly appreciate and want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. But just as far as staying on topic, I'm gonna try this evening to make sure that we are staying adhering pretty, pretty tight to the topic at hand. Go ahead, Sarah.
So I want to make sure that we're being real clear that there is a distinction between youth sports and a commercial use of the field for a kid's camp. Because a kid's camp is not a youth sports league. That, that is, you know, kids, parents paying for them to be able to go up there and participate in something where I-9 is making money off of the process, right? The youth sports, they pay to participate to cover the expenses, but the youth sports league is not making money off of the process. So this is a commercial, this is a commercial use of our field, not the same thing as youth sports.
It specifically says West Bank Area Associations.
Okay. I-9 is not a West Bank Area Association, like youth sports association. It's, it's a commercial enterprise. So, not, not the same thing. And, and I noticed that the rental fee that's listed is a flat rate per hour and it's not based on how many fields they use. So if it, if they were able to use all the fields, so they could have more kids participate, they would make more money, but we would not make any more money. So it would be, it would be an advantage to I-9. But it would not benefit the city anymore. And it would limit the other residents from being able to use it during that time period, so.
Mayor, can I clarify? This is Justin with I-9.
Justin, yeah, go ahead.
I did want to make sure that everybody knew that it was for four weeks. It's not the entire summer. So it's just the three hours per day for four weeks of the summer. And the cost per field is actually for all three fields, $25 an hour per field. And that was just the rate based off of previous rentals through the city last summer and through previous relationships with Western Hills. So the $75 an hour is based on the three, I call it three fields, the baseball, two baseball, and the big open area field. So.
Thank you for the clarification, Justin. Phil McDuffie, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I would just like to say that had we not in the past mandated that dogs could not be on fields one and two, this could easily be addressed in that during the offseason, when the infield's don't need to be in pristine condition, if the fencing were, if fields one and two were fenced in, then dogs could be allowed over on those fields. The larger area, three, four, and five could be made available for I-9 to spread out or anyone else to spread out. In addition, at times when fields three, four, and five would need to be rested and rejuvenated, once again, we would have more flexibility to put dogs on either field one and two and then allow for the mediation or whatever need to be done on three, four, and five. It seems like we have gone into this slippery slope of driving the areas more and more restrictive out. And I don't think a separate dog park is a solution that most people desire or want, nor do I think it makes sense, given our current geographical constraints to get rid of more of our parking and all those sorts of things. So I think there are easy solutions to accommodate everybody, but it doesn't seem like that's really the desire that is out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. And guys, I just, you know, I understand the temptation to take this into a topic that is not I-9. But if I could, again, just encourage everybody to stay in accordance with the agenda item as it is listed. That would be beneficial, I think, to the entirety of the conversation. We have a motion in a second. Do we have additional discussion? We've done all the hands, address the hands that are up. Council, you have action. We ready to call a vote?
Yes.
Amy Patilla?
Hi.
Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
Sarah Hudson?
No.
Okay, well, the vote carries two to one. I appreciate everybody. And again, if we want to have a discussion on leash and off-leash policies, I would encourage folks to put that very specifically as an item on the agenda so that we can provide proper notice to the community. Seven, discussion of possible action to authorize the city administrator to sign a release liability agreement with the owner of Ford Randolph Place for a curb cut to mitigate standing and stagnant water. Amber, you and Charlie have worked with the resident for Randolph Place. Would you mind just providing very briefly some context for council so that we're all apprised of exactly the challenge that's being addressed here?
Sure, and we have the property owner here, Andy, if we need to call on him as well. From what I understand, and I'll let Carrie fill in the gaps because she's been working on this project. A neighboring resident has well water for their irrigation and they water their lawn all the time. And so it's frequently pooling in the street in front of him. And so he would like to get it off the street and put it on his yard. And so we drafted a release of liability for him to be able to do that and release the city of any liability if you all approve of that.
So if I understand it correctly, it's a novel concept of capturing water that would otherwise go to waste. And he's, the property owner is intending to use it to irrigate their property as well. Is that, is that a silver lining way to look at this? We have, sorry, we have, we have the property owner here. Hey, Andy, go ahead, please.
Yeah, the, the, the core issue is that once the, there's a lot of, there's runoff from the excess irrigation that goes into the street. It pools up as, as shown on the exhibit that's attached in your packet. And once it gets up to about four or five inches deep, it actually slips around a point in the road where it can continue to flow down the street like it was originally intended. So this sort of pooled area just remains behind either after a rainfall or after my neighbor runs their sprinkler system. And so it's just, it's just sort of a perpetual, you know, standing water. All I'm trying to do is just drain it so that it's, it's dry, that's all.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Let's see.
Yeah, that's all it is. There's, there's, there's not enough water there to claim an irrigation.
Sure. Well, I'd tell you, if nothing else, I appreciate the proactive nature of helping us get our our utility services in a very broad sense sorted out. You're comfortable, just so that, you know, we're all clear, you're comfortable with the the release of liability has been presented and you guys have all adequately discussed this?
Yes, Carrie presented that to me and I reviewed it. And I think we went back and forth once or twice, but yeah, we got to a place where we're good with it.
Great. Well, Andy, again, I really do appreciate, in truth, you just be willing to to work with the city to find a solution in this regard. It's refreshing to see. Council, do you have any thoughts, questions for, yeah, go ahead, Amy.
I just have a motion whenever you're ready for a motion.
Yes, absolutely.
I would move to authorize the city administrator to sign a release and liability agreement with the owner of Ford Randolph Place for a curb cut to mitigate standing and stagnant water.
We have a motion, and we have a motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Let's open up the floor to discussion, council. If you have any?
Just clarification. We did get Kay Fries, our city engineer. Uh, just clarification, uh, we did get K Freeze, our city engineer. To look at the actual plan and they didn't see any issues, is that correct, Amber?
Andy, I can, I can address that.
Oh, Carrie, I'm sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Yeah, um, so I met with Lauren from K Freeze onsite. And she did not have an issue with what was proposed, Mr. Holland gave us that um. Document that's in the packet, that's his drop of what they're proposing. And we'll, we'll go through that and we'll get it again, we just got the proposal. After looking at this agreement and that was their design, so we'll make sure that the engineers vet the design before we sign off on it. The specific design, but the curb cut to allow water onto his property, they have signed off on.
Thank you, Carrie.
And do, do we need to amend the motion to say that it should be consistent with what the? The city engineer, the design should be consistent with the city engineer, uh.
I, I would leave, uh, I would leave that to Charlie, but the reason I split those documents off was so that you could approve the.
Just the curb cut? Okay, great.
Um, Sarah, you had your hand raised, go ahead.
I, I did, I mean, this is shown as being a four inch pipe. Um, and if you really have four or five inches of standing water. During a rainfall, that's gonna be a lot of water running through that pipe into your yard. I just want to make sure, this is like, I, I drove by there today and I saw the standing water and I can understand the issue. But I just want to make sure, you know, kind of be careful what you wish for here. Because I want to make sure that you don't turn your front yard into a, you know, uh. Surface impoundment during storms.
Yeah, well, our, our, um, our front yard is a drainage conveyance as it is right now, um, we've got. Eleven acres of offsite watershed that comes through our front yard, so. This particular area is not part of that eleven acres, it's just the cul-de-sac water. And that drains to this particular area, so this four inch pipe is really. Just when the rain's over, it's just to drain, just to keep it from being a nuisance afterwards. But the water, the water that goes through that four inch pipe will join much bigger water that's flowing through the heart of our front yard. Um, coming from Jeffrey Cove, um, right across, right across the face of our front yard, across our driveway. So, um, we're, we are, this is, this is a minor tributary, if you will, to a much bigger drainage basin.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure because it, the pipe is not going to only be open after the rain stops.
Is it fair, counsel?
Um, I would be inclined, uh, uh, that, uh, should, uh, Andy and, and his family, uh. Uh, decide that, uh, this isn't, uh, a route they ultimately would like to go, uh, council. Uh, is it fair for us, uh, to safely say that we would take this item back up again, uh, should need arise?
Issue with our.
Basically, 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 I guess, basically, right, to put it, to put it back, I guess, is what I'm saying. Um, if at some point in the future, um, uh, Andy suggested that, uh. You know, um, as Sarah's mentioned, uh, you get more than, more than you, you wish for. Carrie, go ahead.
All you'd have to do is fill up the end of the pipe at the curb. The way we drafted the agreement is such that if, if the city has an issue, we can. Have the resident replace the curb or we can go in and replace the curb. So I don't see any reason why the, if the resident, you know, the issue, they could, they could also replace it.
Good to, okay, well, um, again, Andy, I, I appreciate you, uh, helping us, uh, problem solve. Uh, stagnant water on any of our streets is, uh, less than, less than ideal, so. We do have a, a, again, the motion and the second, uh, council, uh, do we have any additional, uh, discussion or questions? Not seeing any hands, um, I'll call for a vote, Amy Patillo?
Hi.
Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
All right, Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
Okay, uh, the motion carries, uh, Carrie, uh, thank you, uh, to you and, uh. Uh, and again, Andy, thank you, uh, uh, to you and your family, uh, for, for working with us, uh, to find a solution on that. As if there's nothing else, I'll move on to item eight. Discussion possible action on the fencing and landscaping plans and the off-street parking plan for the purpose of building. Of a building permit at the Western Hills Athletic Club. Carrie, I know you and, and Amber have had, uh, quite a bit of discussion. Uh, with the Western Hills Athletic Club, uh, in this regard, um, would either of you? Uh, like to, uh, start us off here, we have a significant number of, uh, attachments, um, for this item. Go ahead, Carrie.
Absolutely, I'm sorry for the number of attachments, uh.
You're okay, we like, we like, we like, we like thoroughness and transparency, thank you very much.
You're welcome, um, yeah, I thought it's been a while since this was on your agenda, it was, uh, it came before you in December. Uh, Western Hills Athletic Club has requested a permit to add two additional tennis courts. Uh, and refurbish the existing two tennis courts. They have included drainage plans, uh, landscaping plans and fencing details. At the December meeting. There was some confusion as to who was able to represent Western Hills Athletic Club, we cleared that hurdle. Uh, we also required notice to go out as consistent with, uh, building applications, which they have done. Um, they had to make some clarifications on their landscaping plans. I received those clarifications last Thursday afternoon, so, uh, in full transparency. Um, I would like for K Freeze to review these, um. Their previous cover plans, just to make sure that they are consistent. Uh, they appear to be consistent with what's on their site plans, but, uh, they are really close on that impervious cover there. You know, fifty point nine percent. So that, that is close and I do want our engineers to, to just double check that that. You know, that their calculations match, uh, what is coming before council is their landscaping. Landscaping and park zoning is, uh, council purview, uh, as is fencing. Uh, so they have to abide by three, uh, ordinances essentially. Um, the residential tree canopy and replacement ordinance, uh, a buffering requirement. And, um, and open space requirement twenty percent. They have abided by the residential tree protection ordinance. Uh, they have one tree every five hundred square feet as, uh, required by the ordinance. There is the, the existing site is non-conforming. And the existing landscaping behind the tennis courts is non-conforming. Uh, the expansion, the addition of two more tennis courts. Will fall to the board of adjustment to review for hardship. Uh, so that is not something up for council consideration this evening, just the landscaping. Uh, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carrie, that's conference, go ahead, Wendy.
So for clarification and reading this, the. This is the, the first time I'm hearing about the non-conformity and it having to go to the board of adjustment, so. Just for clarification, the thirty-foot greenbelt zone is, um, is what. In the review, the city staff has seen that is non-conforming, so that there should be a thirty-foot greenbelt between. The tennis courts and the property abutting, uh, residential property, is that correct? Is that how you're interpreting it?
Yes, and the, and, and additionally. Uh, those tennis courts, uh, occupy the rear setback, the existing courts do. And the proposed courts occupy that rear setback, so that will be heard by the board of adjustments.
So how far setback are they now from the property line? Cause it, I think it's a ten-foot setback is what is allowed, right?
Carrie, sorry, can you clarify, what are we considering to be the front of the lot?
We consider the front of the lot to be, uh, plywood drive. And it appears the edge of the tennis court is eleven feet. And there's a twenty-foot rear setback. And, and a thirty-foot from the property line to the impervious cover. And a, and a thirty-foot buffering zone, correct?
So there's a twenty-foot build line, but a thirty-foot greenbelt, so it's fifty feet? Or how, how does that work?
I would say that it's thirty feet.
So the build lines twenty feet, but because the greenbelt, uh. Natural state greenbelt is there, it then means that they can build no, no closer than thirty feet. So if this has to go before the board of adjustment. I'm wondering how the city council would be able to make a determination of the landscaping. If we don't know whether or not there's supposed to be a greenbelt. It seems kind of like the cart and the horse, um, situation here. Happening.
It seems to me that we should let the board of adjustments, uh, review this and then have it come back for the landscaping and the fencing. If the board of adjustment approves it. Because if they don't approve it, it doesn't matter what, whether we approve the landscaping and the fencing or not, they, they can't. Go ahead with it.
And if they do approve it, then maybe the landscaping that we would approve wouldn't be the same. Because then it would have a thirty-foot greenbelt and so it seems like the landscaping. Would change, um, so it, it wouldn't make sense to approve the landscaping before we know. Whether or not the board of adjustment is going to approve the, um. The variance, which I didn't even know was in play on this, so, um, this is new information for, for me.
It, it's definitely a, a chicken and egg situation, um, because. Council ultimately oversees all landscaping if, if council. Um, has any recommendations for the landscaping plan. Or disagrees with the overall content of the landscaping plan. Then the item cannot be considered and also. If a variance isn't granted, then the item can't be considered, so there's, there's two factors for these plans. We did discuss internally, what, if this should go to city council first or board of adjustment first. There wasn't really a clear answer, um, I think if you all wanted to have this go before the board of adjustment first. And then come back to you, that would be inappropriate. Consideration.
Um, we have, uh, thank you, Carrie, um, we have Brian Nash. If I understand properly, you're, you're with the, the vice president, uh, at, of the pool board at the Western Hills Athletic Club. Board, is that correct, Brian? And if, either, either way, please introduce yourself, uh, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I don't know that vice president really means a whole lot, uh, but I am a member of the WAC board. Um, I'm also a resident at Fort Chris Cove, um, so I didn't know if there was going to be a public comment portion pursuant to the agenda. And it'd be better for me to address some of these things there. But since it sounded like there was a little bit of discussion as to the order of operations on this, I thought I might jump in and kind of. Provide some thoughts on that, if that would be okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of moving parts, this is obviously a unique situation, it isn't a typical commercial or residential spot. And I think, uh, you know, Carrie, Amber, Ashley have all put a lot of thought into the best ways to approach this, but. You know, importantly, as was noted, we kind of had first tried to start this process back in December and there was a little bit of. Perhaps confusion at the time as to sort of who was authorized to move forward and where things stood. We've tried to work with the city and they're all amazing, um, we've been working kind of really diligently to get all of our ducks in a row. But it has been about, you know, five months since that timeframe or almost six soon. Uh, we'd really like to push the process forward and I don't think that these have to be contingent on a, well. I'll say it this way, you can always frame things as being contingent on X or contingent on Y, so. It could be framed as a conditional approval on a landscape plan, subject to approval of the. Board of adjustment on the variance request, so I really would hope that we don't try and, you know, push this again. Because then we'll be looking at a, I don't know, a July meeting, right? Because the soonest we'll be able to get in front of the board of adjustment would be June. And then we're back in front of the city in July and then I, who knows what happens next, but we wouldn't even be able to get started. Even assuming everybody approved things till, what, August? Um, so I would ask that the city council help us try and move this ball forward, it's been a lot of. Work by a lot of people to try and get everything set up in a way, and as you noted, that agenda packet's pretty thick. But it's because we've kind of done all of our homework here and we'd, we'd like to walk through that and see if we can get some action on it tonight. I'd, I'd be happy to address a bunch of aspects of the plan, but I didn't want to start going down that path. Unless you guys are inviting us to do that as part of the public comment section, I just kind of wanted to address this sort of order of operations aspect.
Sure, no, I, I appreciate that, um, council, um. You do have, uh, a willing participant to provide as much color, uh, as, uh, as you guys are interested in hearing, yes, go ahead, Sarah.
And I think before we, if we're trying to keep this tight, as you said, I think that we should not. Have any, uh, you know, expansive discussion on this, um. Because we are not the ones that make the determination of the board of adjustment. And if they don't approve it, then case closed, right? So we don't need to evaluate the landscaping ordinance until we know that, that this gets the variance that it would require. And I went up to the pool today with the impervious cover plan. And found that there are a number of missing impervious cover items on the plan. And, and inconsistencies on what's included in the impervious cover calculation as impervious cover. What's included as, um, part of the property but not included as impervious cover. And when, when the impervious cover calculation that is, as it's done is forty-nine point nine one percent. And the limit is fifty percent, there's enough discrepancies on this plan, I think. That could easily push it over fifty percent, and so that needs to be evaluated carefully. By this, by our current city engineer to verify that that's been done accurately. Before it goes to the board of adjustment, because we need to know what all the board of adjustment is having to, um, consider a variance for. And, and I'm, I'm thinking that the plan is, as it's prepared, does not meet the impervious cover limit either. So I think that that needs to be clarified and, and sent to the board of adjustment. Before we spend any time worrying about the fencing and the landscaping.
Marnie, you have your, your hand raised, uh, the floor's yours.
Hi, hi again, guys. And I was on the board at the pool during the construction of the new building and the renovation of the pool, the, the hardscape, et cetera. And we paid very particular attention to impervious cover so that we did not go over. I'm, I'm happy to help contribute in any way, but, um, I, I feel like. We, we were not negligent on that aspect, of course, this was years ago, I'm hoping that the code is still viable. In this, uh, discussion, but I'd just like to throw that part out there, that we, we did pay attention.
Well, to what's there now, but there's a proposal for changing that. And, and I think that there have been things that have been added since. And I think that there have been things that have been added since the renovation that are not included on the plan. Like pads for picnic tables, rock pathways, the concrete sidewalk around the side of the tennis courts. Right now, the trail along Rollingwood Drive is included as part of the total area of the pool property, but it is specifically called out as not being included as impervious cover, including the part of the driveway that is in the right away, which is clearly impervious cover. So like I said, there's just a number of things on here that are not that need to be checked because it does not seem to be as accurate as it should be when the resulting calculation is, you know, in hundreds of a percentage from the limit.
Aren't we, as City Council, only allowed, like what our purview is, is to to comment on the landscaping, not the impervious cover? That's going to be for the drainage engineer to figure out. And so that, they will have to adjust their plans, they'll have to work with the staff, they'll have to work with the city engineer to figure that part out. So bring it to attention's okay, but I don't think it's really in the scope of what we're being asked to decide here tonight, which is, I think, if I'm mistaken, and not mistaken, we're just supposed to look at the fencing, the landscaping plans and the off-street parking plan. And for the sake of moving things forward, I'm willing to to talk about those things and see if there is some, you know, way that we can pass something contingent on what the Board of Adjustment decides. And it's possible that, you know, if they, if they allow this variance for not having a green belt, then the landscaping plans would stay the same. I don't know exactly, though, what the pool is going to be asking for with the Board of Adjustment, so it's hard to say. You know, it does, it's a chicken and an egg thing, but I do think it really, the ball's going to be in the court of whether or not Board of Adjustment is going to allow a variance for this. And I'm okay with approving landscaping plans if the variance was approved based on what we've seen, if it's going to protect the neighbors with screening and to keep them from having visual impacts around their home. So if that's, if that is going to hang up the pool on this, I'm willing to have that conversation. I am. I don't know what the other council members are willing to do. But again, I have no control over what the Board of Adjustment is going to grant or not grant. And I think that that's ultimately where the pool is going to have to. You know, that's where it's, the decision's going to lie ultimately, whether or not we approve landscaping plans.
Thanks, Wendy. Carrie, well, I tell you what, Carrie, sorry, Catherine Scott had her hand raised. Catherine, did you still, you took it down or you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure we're not missing anybody. Carrie, go ahead, please.
I was just going to offer that at the December meeting, Council requested of the applicant that they clarify their landscaping plans and they have, and so that, that is a primary reason why I brought this back to you all before going to the Board of Adjustment. And for the sake of the timeframe for them, it has been a while.
Thank you, Carrie. That's a really, really good point. Amy, go ahead, please.
So I appreciate the chicken and egg issue. What I'm wondering is, right now, we're looking at landscaping plans that are based on a 10-foot setback. That's correct. So we're looking at approving, we're looking at approving a landscaping plan that normally we would have approval over in a 30-foot space, but we're being asked to approve it in a 10-foot space.
That's correct. I will offer that the existing courts, if you look at the site plan, are 10 feet off, roughly 10 feet off. And there are the volleyball courts occupy that setback currently where the proposed tennis courts would be.
Except that the volleyball court is not impervious cover.
But it's not landscaping.
Okay, so, yeah, I agree that, I think the last communication that we had with this applicant was requesting that they come back with landscaping clarifications. And there was discussion at that council meeting also about the green belt or the 30-foot green zone. But there wasn't anything in our packet at that time that actually raised that as being an issue that also needed to be addressed. So I'm, I think that, and I do recall that Sarah and I had differing interpretations of the code at that time. And I believe, Carrie, that your interpretation now of the code is in alignment with what Sarah proposed. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to dispute the interpretation that you have of the code. I think it's probably correct when you look at the heading and some other things. But I would, I would say that if, if for some reason we don't take action on the landscaping tonight, I think my reason for that would be that when we asked for the landscaping information, we didn't know then that the applicant was also going to have to go get a variance. And so my concern right now is if the variance fails, I think the applicant is going to have to go back and relook at their work. And then we're going to be back in the green belt discussion again anyway, but we're going to be back in it with a different plan. And so I, my position is, I really want to see more opportunities for people to be able to be active in our community. A lot of people are members at the, at the club. Adding additional tennis courts provides additional spaces for kids and adults to be active. I want to work with the Pool Board on making sure that there's a good landscaping plan that the neighbors also feel like, you know, is able to do what a landscaping needs to do, whether that's 10-foot or 30-foot. But I guess I'm just, I know that the hurdle that the pool is going to have to meet at the Board of Adjustment is perhaps higher than the hurdle that probably exists right now, just based on hearing Wendy talk about it and myself. It sounds like if we took a vote right now, we probably both would say, I'm just guessing that we would be in support of the landscaping. But if the Board of Adjustment doesn't approve it, then the landscaping is going to have to come back with additional plans. So that's a circular way of saying, I don't know what the right answer is here, but I do think that I do think that there's a, a need to make sure that we've, we've looked at whether this is a sufficient level of landscaping for a 10-foot buffer that ordinarily would be 30 feet. And that's kind of the lens that I want to make sure that if we do talk about it tonight, that we talk about it with.
Thanks. Go ahead, Brian. Sorry, I wasn't sure if you still had your hand up or if that was a remnant. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I'll be quick. I appreciate the comments that you all have made and I respect what you just mentioned, Councilwoman Patillo. I'll just note that there's three scenarios and in two of them, we have to come back before you, right? So you punt tonight, we go to Board of Adjustment, we still have to come back before you. You make a contingent ruling, we go to Board of Adjustment, they don't give us the variance, we still have to come back before you. But there is a scenario where you make a contingent ruling, we go to Board Adjustment and they give us the variance we request, in which case we get to move along faster. And so we'd ask respectfully that we get that third opportunity by at least ruling on this, what I'm calling a contingent option here. So that in the event that the Board of Adjustment does give the variance that we're seeking, we can move forward. Because in either of the two other instances, we're going to be back before you regardless. At least in this third option that we're talking about, we can move the process along faster. That's the only point that I would just mention. And again, I'd be happy, or others from the board are on tonight, as well as our architect and engineer, we can walk you through. We've actually exceeded the tree ordinance provisions. We're adding a lot of trees. It's a great landscaping plan. You know, the best, it's amazing. I'm just kidding, that was a little bit of a joke. But we also have a parking plan ready to go. You know, we're ready. We've done a lot of homework on this. We'd love to see this get decided on so that we can kind of move the ball forward in the event that we do get this variance that we're going to be seeking. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the fencing and landscaping plans and the off-street parking plan for the purposes of a building permit at Western Hills Athletic Club. And I'm going to say, if there's a second, that, you know, we probably still need some discussion, but I'd like to put that motion out there.
So is it you making the motion, Wendy? Yep, and
I'm seconding.
We have a second. So Ashley, if I don't hear anything from you, you've got that motion, right? As a motion. So that'll open the floor for discussion. Sarah, go ahead, please.
So there are still issues with the impervious cover calculations that need to be addressed. That was something that I brought up at the December meeting that is still, there is concrete shown on this drawing that is not counted as impervious cover in the calculations. So that needs to be addressed and that needs to be addressed before it goes to Board of Adjustment because that's something that they would have to consider, whether that requires a variance also. And I'm also not understanding what the urgency of this is because the kids are out of school for the summer and now seems like it would be a prime time for them to be able to use the tennis courts or about to be out for the summer. So I guess I'm wondering why you want to tear up the tennis courts when, you know, there are a lot of people available that could be using them. Where we're having to come back to us again for the landscaping review when one of our council members who lives very close to the tennis courts is not here to vote on this tonight also. And I just, I don't understand the reason for us rushing through this when there are still issues that need to be addressed before anybody can take this up at the Board of Adjustments or or again, at council, so.
Catherine, I saw your hand go up, potentially, and I'm going to give you an opportunity again.
Yeah, thanks. Sarah, hi, Catherine Scott, Rollingwood resident and also former Pool Board member and president. And I would like to say that it, not sure when you were at the pool the last time, but okay, well, I've been a member and my kids have been going to that pool for over the last 10 years and a lot of those papers that you speak of have been there before me, specifically the ones under the picnic tables, along the walkways. Moreover, those tennis courts are in incredible disrepair. They are actually unplayable in many parts and in some areas, they're actually in fact dangerous. So we have put off for many, many years the ripping out of those courts because of time, money and the very process of which we're going through right now, which, if I recall, and I think Sings on this call as well, the actual approval to build new courts happened over a year ago. So this has been a lengthy process for the Pool Board and not one that we've taken lightly. So I would just say to you that while I appreciate your due diligence here, I would respectfully ask that we just focus on the landscaping parking today and let the Board of Adjustments handle things such as impervious cover.
Thank you, Catherine. Amy, you have, well, both, sorry, Wendy, I think you probably had your hand up first. Trying to be respectful.
So I just wanted to say I made my motion, but I didn't make it contingent. So I'm going to go back and amend that. So I would say discussion and action on the fencing and landscaping plans. So I'm going to say I moved to approve the fencing and landscaping plans and the off-street parking plan for the purposes of a building permit at Western Hills Athletic Club contingent on the Board of Adjustment granting the pool a variance. Because I missed that part.
Thank, thank you. Amy, you were the second.
I will second that amendment to the original motion.
And then further, I would say, as far as the fencing goes, I believe that there is already a privacy fence between the pool and the courts. So I would just, I would like to see that, and I've talked to Brian and I've talked to Sings and I, and I know that that the people working on this project want to make everyone happy and are willing to do what it takes with the landscaping to make everyone happy. I would say that, you know, although our code requires that cedar fence, I don't know that it's necessary or that the neighbors would want it. I think that anytime you add more trees, that it's wonderful. I don't know that anyone would have a problem with the trees that you proposed putting there. I agree that the off-street parking plan won't change because the scheduling of the swim meets and the tennis wouldn't happen at the same time. So if, you know, if what we're looking at really is just whether or not the screening is sufficient, I think that those trees are lovely, but I know that the pool would be willing to work with the neighbors should they need more screening or should they feel that it was insufficient. So I feel confident with the team that, that at the pool doing the right thing for our community and working with our, with our neighbors. So I feel confident and comfortable voting on it and then hoping that y'all have some luck at the Board of Adjustment.
Thanks, Wendy. Amy?
Oh, thanks. Okay, so Mayor, if you're willing to accept one question related to impervious cover, just to clarify, my question is, in the, in the diagram that we were given in the packet, it shows that the pool itself, like where the water is, is included in the impervious cover calculation, but when I looked at our code.
Is it? Yeah.
It shouldn't be. So I just wondered if we could get some, if we're going to go back and do it, then I just wanted to point out that that was, that seemed inconsistent to me. I didn't know that pools actually were included in pervious cover calculations.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, that's, it's my understanding that they're not.
Carrie. Coping is considered, but the
Only the coping, right?
No, that's not true either. That there's a difference on the TCQ rules for whether or not you have to have a water, the WPAP whatever plan. In that case, because it's a water quality rule, the pool does not count as impervious cover. For drainage issues, a pool is by definition an impervious cover, right? The whole point of a pool is to not allow water to infiltrate through the pool bottom. And in our code of ordinance, it says impervious cover means impermeable constructed or installed coverage of natural ground services and includes only the footprint on a horizontal claim. Vertical walls are not included. It doesn't say anything about pools. So that is definitely part of the impervious cover. I will offer that TCQ and our engineers at the time approved these plans.
Okay, so I just, I just had that question because I looked at it and I, it was, it was confusing to me what the definition was of impervious cover, why a pool would be included in that. But if our engineers have reviewed that, I will leave that to them and their interpretation. I just didn't think it should be included based on my reading of the code. But my other, so my other statement would be, is a threshold question. We're looking at whether the landscaping that's being proposed in this being proposed in this area, which if it were approved by the Board of Adjustment, would be 10 feet instead of 30 feet. Whether it is it's not going to be a natural green belt in in parts of the areas, though I look, it looks like towards the back of the club area, it probably will be left in its natural state from what I can tell with the existing trees. So I just wonder if if anybody at the pool would like to talk about how the landscaping that will be put in the new landscaping that will be added into the 10 feet between the new tennis courts and the fence will provide a sense of a similar functioning green belt zone.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, sorry, I caught part of it, but I was giving my kids a hug goodnight. So I think, Amy, you were asking about what the plan is for the 10 feet in between. Was that the?
I just, so I mean, I'm looking at the code and it's, the intent is for that to be a 30-foot green buffer that would either be natural or that the city council would approve landscaping within. And so in the event that instead of it being 30 feet, it's 10 feet, I just, I thought I would see what the pool's view is on how that space is still going to function effectively as a green belt buffer area.
So if it's 30 feet instead of 10 feet, how would we handle that?
Well, so it's by our code, it's supposed to be 30. You have it proposed as 10. You're going to go to the Board of Adjustment. I'm theoretically requesting that it be 10 instead of 30. And so we're approving landscaping for that 10 feet that ordinarily would be 30 feet.
Right, yeah. So I mean, I'll answer it the best way that I can, which is you know, clearly, we're not coming out of the blue and saying we need a 20-foot variance because this is where the courts currently are. And what we are looking to do is effectively extend that non-conformity as part of these plans, as I'm sure you can kind of tell. We're just taking the current footprint and then going further into the property with that to where those sand volleyball courts are. In that current state, as everything is right now, it is a I'll call it a lawn, right? There's some existing live oak trees. I'm guessing on that, to be honest. I'm not an arborist, but that's what they look like to me. And then there's, you know, grass. So to the extent that that's just kind of the current state that it's in. The landscape plan that I believe we've proposed as to how that 10 feet would be treated adds I think there's a total of 13 trees and about eight or nine, maybe 10 of those are in between those tennis courts and the property. I don't know that we specifically discussed what would happen with a 30-foot buffer. Because I don't know that that's I just don't know that how that works, to be honest. Frankly, it probably means things move closer to the club and we have to take out more trees, which would be something that we're trying to avoid as much as possible to do this. But, you know, we're certainly wanting to be good neighbors and we've talked with Mo, we've talked with Buck. And, you know, we're working with them to try and, you know, we've shown them the trees that we're planning to do. If there were other forms of vegetation that they'd like in between there, I think that is absolutely something that we're willing to do. I will say that, like, for example, on the fence, and I think you brought this up earlier. You know, I was talking with Buck, actually kind of in the middle of this meeting for a minute, just to check in with him. And he had mentioned that he preferred there not to be a fence. And we certainly don't, you know, need that fence that's been proposed, but we're doing it because the code requires that. We'd be happy to take the fence out and if it would be better to have, you know, some you know, lugestrums or words that I probably will struggle to come up with, but you know, I, we're absolutely willing to be flexible on that and find a way to put in some landscaping that would give it a more natural state. But in its current state, it's not that way, right? Or I guess arguably, there's some bushy elements, but it's also mostly lawn. Does that kind of answer the question you were asking?
It does. I guess it it also, I'm not, I actually really like to have finality and I want you all to have the ability to move forward quickly, but it, I guess it raises the question for me if there's still ongoing discussions with neighbors about the fence and that issue, whether going to Board of Adjustments first and then when it, and then it coming back to the council to finalize the landscaping plan could be beneficial.
Yeah, I mean, I just we're going to be a year in and we're not going to have new tennis courts. And then that's going to be a bummer for everybody. They're in a terrible state right now. I think arguably, I don't want to call it dangerous and try and sensationalize things, but you know, I don't play tennis. This isn't my game. My knees don't let me do it. But I was out there today walking them and there are huge cracks in these things. And we're not really able to use them in a meaningful way. We're holding lessons out there. I think the coaches are probably pretty frustrated with it. I think the members that are using the courts are pretty frustrated with it. And we're just, we're frankly trying to improve the facilities and we'd like to do this, you know, as soon as possible. I, I mean, we're dialoguing with all the right people and we're trying to move the ball forward. And I think we're just kind of, you know, and this is no fault to anyone, but it's just a little bit frustrating. Because every time we try and pick up a ball and advance it, we're kind of that's not the ball you're supposed to pick up and move it forward. And I, like I said, it's not any fault of anyone. We just like to try and kind of check off some of these boxes so we can move it forward. And the plans require that we do what we do until we've done all that, right? So it's, it's been up to the engineers, Carrie's taken a look at it. I think we've checked off all the boxes. But obviously, you know, you, the council has the approval on the landscape plan. I guess I, we need guidance from you. If you say we don't approve it, that's fine, but we need you to vote and say that so that we know how to take the next action. That's, that's the problem that we're facing. Because we don't want to be in limbo anymore either.
Well, and I can appreciate that. So I would say that if we take a vote on it and it's your, your current landscaping and fence plan and off-street parking plan is approved, that if you go to Board of Adjustments and they also agree, and then subsequently, discussions with the neighbors include a desire to not have to do the fence requirement, that I hope that you all would feel welcome to come back and have that discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, honestly, the last thing we want is for, you know, the families that are bordering us to not approve of what we're doing, we're trying to work well with them. And so if there's something that's required by city code, like a fence, and everybody around us is like, we don't want the fence, then we'll come back and say, you know, it sounds like people don't want us to have the fence. We'd like approval to not be the fence. So that would
Landscaping is like the last thing you really do too. So there's lots of like, although you have to have it to get your permit, there's lots of time to adjust the landscaping. And that's where I think, you know, realistically, what my point was that the people who are working on this project are our neighbors and they know the neighbors and they're, they're willing to work to make sure that they're happy. So, you know, that's I think why it, for me, it'd be okay to contingently approve this landscaping, parking plan, fence. And then come back and adjust it if you need to adjust it. But I think it's sufficient right now, as long as you know, Board of Adjustment says that 10 feet or it's 11 feet, I believe, right, Carrie? And so 11 feet's okay, then I think that's your bigger hurdle and we, we could talk about it all night, but I kind of want to just call the vote and, and see if we can let y'all move forward or not, because at this point, I think we, we've talked it all through.
Well, good. Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna let you do my job for me. Tell you what, we will, assuming there's no more no more comments, no more hands. I will call the vote. Amy Patilla?
Hi.
Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
Sarah Hudson?
No.
We have two to one on that and and I'm sorry, I see a hand just went up. Myan is, I believe, the name. You want to?
Hi there. I am a partner. Hi, I'm a partner and I live next door to the tennis courts.
Hi.
And I'm not
Sure, go ahead.
And so I'm just concerned if y'all are going to do the conduit for the lights. Because that's a concern for us.
I don't think lights are allowed by city code at tennis courts or swimming pools. So Carrie, is there any plans for lights?
They were plans to do a conduit for lights for the future at some point.
Not received lighting plans.
Brian, I'll go ahead and go ahead and give you this. And then, then guys, what I will tell you is, is Apurna, I can assure you that if lighting plans are ever part of a future discussion, they would absolutely have to be brought back in front of the council to have, to have that discussion. Brian, go ahead, please.
And we don't have any lighting planned for this. I, we may have electrical conduit because it makes sense to have electricity out there at the court for various reasons, but there's no lighting plan and certainly we will always and will continue to comply with city code. So that's not part of the plan.
But why would you need to have electricity out there if there's no, I mean, there's no need for lights for the future? Like if you there wouldn't be a need for that, then you just cut that out.
Yeah, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on like the plans or the needs, but I can assure you, if we're not planning to have lights, that's not part of this lighting, that's not part of this packet that we prepared.
And so, Apurna, I'm confident that any, any future discussion, assuming there ever were any, this is the first I've it's been suggested within my earshot anyway, of potential for lighting, that would absolutely come back in front of council.
Because Mo did get a couple of calls regarding the fact that they were going to add the conduits for lights in the future, and that's our concern.
And that's, again, a fair concern and you know, I don't know who made those calls or why they would presuppose that conduits indicated a, you know, a default to a future lighting system. But again, I can assure you and Mo, that and anybody else making those calls that's worried about the same, that any discussion around outdoor lighting in and around our park, that is a discussion that will always be had openly and publicly in this council.
And I think the, the last thing I want to mention is, you know, if there, and I came late to this, so I don't know if there's going to be a new league or any of that sort. And have you talked about the parking and all that situation?
No, that parking was not part of the conversation.
Well, we did, we did approve
Parking plan.
The parking plan to stay what it is, because it is that the tennis and the swim would be held at different times. So additional parking would not be necessary. So the that is why I made the motion to approve the parking plan just to stay what it is and not to increase the parking.
Okay, thanks.
Apologize.
That's all I needed. Thanks.
Oh, and I would also say, if, if the tennis court did want to put lighting for some reason in the future, it would be a variance to our code of ordinance. It would have to go through planning and zoning for a public hearing and have a recommendation by planning and zoning. And then it would if planning and zoning approved it or disapproved it, it'd have to go to Board of Adjustment. And is that right, Charlie? So it wouldn't be something that the city council could allow or disallow because it's our, our, is that correct, Charlie?
I don't know where the regulation is located at. If it's in the zoning, if it's in the zoning code, then a variance would be required. However, if it's prohibited, then you can't, you can't grant a variance to a prohibition.
Right. So I, just, you know, so you have a sense of security that that is not something in the plans now. It is it's not something that the city council has taken up and it would require a variance. And so you know, I could see maybe needing electricity out there if you were going to plug in a blower to blow leaves off or for various reasons, you know, in an outdoor setting, you might need electricity close by, but I'm sure that if Carrie says that they haven't received lighting plans and Brian saying that they haven't, that, that, you know, I would believe that's true.
I, I agree that there's no lighting plans, but the fact that there's conduits for future lighting is my concern.
Gotcha.
Yeah, okay, guys, we've already taken action on this. I'm trying to be respectful and keep this tight. But Brian and Marnie, I'm going to ask, keep this to, you know, tight. And then these are the last comments we'll take on this. Brian, you're up first. You're muted, buddy.
Yeah, sorry. I was just going to tell Apurna, like, I, I'm not an expert on tennis courts, but I think some of the ideas behind this are you know, water fountains and water bottle fillers require electricity. You know, there's leaf blowers and things like that that might get used and we'd like to move towards like less gas powered things. I think there's stuff about fans that use to dry off courts. So I'm not entirely certain. I just think, you know, like when you build a home and you're like, yeah, let's put an outlet over there to make sure if we need it later. Everything requires electricity these days, but I can sort of say this to you now, there's no nefarious plan to sneak in lighting and we would have a we're not trying to do that. So I don't know, I'm just trying to, like, you know, that there, there may be electricity, but it's not intended to be in around and try and sneak in some lighting in it. I'm sure we hear a lot from a lot of people and not just you if we tried to pull something like that.
Yeah, no, we definitely would. Thank you.
Hi, it's Marnie again. I was just going to say the exact same thing as Brian. I mean, I, having played tennis on those courts and, and knowing the maintenance required, I mean, there, there is some power needed for the water fountains, for a ball machine that will throw for an auto, auto feed, fans to dry. Our pro uses blowers to maintain the courts all the time. If that was electric, it'd be a lot faster. It really, it is necessary to have electricity out there and, and it's not intended for lighting. Okay, that was it. Hi, Aparna.
Thank you, Marnie.
Thanks, y'all. Thanks, y'all.
Absolutely. Okay, so council, we're going to move on to item 10, discussion possible action on ordinance authorizing a budget adjustment in the amount of $6,000 to fund additional work associated with easement location identification services. Amber, do I have you? If not, I'll open it up to Jay.
Yes, you have me. Yeah, I will punt to Jay, but just say we're making really great progress. We're at a point where WSB needs to do additional work and we're excited that he's offered to add more features to our map and I'll let him talk to you about it.
Thank you.
Amber, thank you, members of the council. Good evening. As Amber said, we have made quite a bit of progress. If the council would, will recall back at the at the beginning, we had developed a budget that the council approved and our goal was to be able to we thought we could and we thought we could draw about 250 easements using that budget. The good news is we were able to be a little bit more efficient than that. So to date, we've mapped around 350 easements. And all with the council's And all with the council's permission, I'll share my screen in just a minute and just show you what it looks like for now. But there's more progress to be made. We have another approximately, I think it's seventy to eighty easement documents that we have, we have in our possession, but we just haven't mapped those because we've bumped up against that original budget that the council authorized. So that's one of the reasons why we're we're here tonight. In addition, the city has purchased its license for the Art GIS online software, so that's all in place. And so that means that the council, the staff, anyone else you want to provide access to this information, that would be available. Now, it'd be probably good to get this the map a little more complete before you do that. But that's obviously up to the to the council. So Mayor, if I if the council would indulge me, if I could share and just show you what things look like.
Yeah, I think we've got an extra five minutes, right, Jay? Go for it.
All right, I appreciate that. So hopefully you can see that you can see this hopefully. And you can get an idea here within the city, the city's boundary is drawn in and all these different colored shapes are easements and they're all color coded by the different type of easement that they are, so just to, as we're zooming in here, you can see the number that are that are there right now. If you select one, not only will you get the name of the property owner, cause that comes in as well, but you'll get information on that easement. This one here is a P U E and also a drainage easement and then there's a link to a document that then has the plat that we took the information off of to draw the easements. So now you've got that record there for you. It's always there. You can print this, you can download it, so you can email it to someone. It's right at your fingertips versus what Carrie's been sifting through for quite some time. So just wanted to at least give the council a glimpse of that. Obviously, there's a username and a password that could be given to the council if you wanted to take a look at it yourself as well. So next steps are to finish the easement mapping and that's gonna take some support from the council for us to do that. We've also included in the proposed amendment creating some additional base maps from either a CAD map or a paper map, depending on what we can get a hold of. It's something that we are coordinating and collaborating with your city engineer on to see what they have. Trying to get information from L N V and depending on what we're able to get, we'll create these maps. That is the water main base map. We're also gonna be able to spot the water valves that are being collected through the other contract that you the council approved a meeting or two ago, where you're getting the valves exercised. A sewer map, including the lift stations. We're gonna identify properties with grinder pumps that seems to be something, a piece of information that's important. And then the city's zoning map and getting that into the same format. They'll all then have layers you can toggle on and off and information that you can attach. The total to do all of that would be a six thousand dollar amendment and that's what we're here to put in front of the council tonight. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Jay, I guess the first question that I have, or I'll open up questions, I suppose. Are we confident that six thousand gets us all the way there? We're not gonna see you next month asking us for an add-on?
For for the items I just outlined were were covered. We know how many easements we need to draw, we know how long it'll take us because of the work we've already been doing. So we're very confident in that.
Great. Well, I'll tell you what, that looks like impressive work. Don't get some surprise, but I I am appreciative of what you guys have done so far, so. Council, do you have thoughts, questions, concerns? Amber, Carrie?
I would just say that we're excited to have our maps in an electronic form that we can reference in the field and that won't leave the door. If an employee walks out the door, we'll always have this information and so we're excited to have some tools to help us do our jobs better.
I would make a motion to approve a proposal from WSB Engineering for additional easement and GIS plan work associated with the easement location and identification study in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Thank you, Wendy. Do we have a second? Thank you, Amy. Do we have a discussion, counsel? Go ahead, Sarah.
So do we have a list somewhere of what the phase two easements are?
Mayor and council, we have, we have all of the easements that Carrie has given us. I frankly don't know exactly where they're located on the map, because we haven't drawn them yet, but we have all those documents in our possession.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that we have the scope identified. So if we're saying six thousand dollars for this scope and the only description of the scope that we have is the email that you sent, which says map the phase two easements. And if we don't have it, some kind of a delineation of what the phase two easements are. Just to make sure that we know what we're getting for this.
Jay, can you, do you have an approximation number of of documents for the entry or Carrie? Do you have, did you catalog? Has anybody cataloged the documents we're talking about? Yes.
Yes, I have an answer to that, Mayor. We have, it's seventy-five. I might be off by one or two on that, but there's seventy-five left.
Okay, thank you.
I I just wanna make sure, to your point, Mike, about is there gonna be more cost?
Yeah, no, that's.
We know what we're including in this cost instead of kind of a nebulous undefined term, make sure we know what that term is.
You bet. I I I trust that that Jay and and his team are aren't going to introduce a phase three.
Unless you find more documents, Mayor.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, do we have any other points, counsel? If not, I'll go ahead and call the vote. You guys have all shifted on my screen now. Wendy Hundley? Amy Patillo? Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
All right. Guys have it. Jay, thank you very much. What do you figure is the timeline on this?
With the authorization, I think we'd be done probably in time for the next council meeting. I I mean, we're already geared up to and we've got the documents for the most part in our possession, so we can get going on it immediately.
Sounds good. All right, well, we appreciate it. You've got the authorization. I'll let you and and Amber kinda take it from here to make sure everything's squared away. I tell you what, council, we are and and everybody joining us, we're gonna take a brief two-minute intermission. So just in case any of our council members need to leave the dais briefly.
And Mayor, when we come back, I think that there are some people who are here to speak on number fourteen. So just if you wanted to pull that up.
Of that and expedite that. Well, I'll tell you what, I will be willing, I'll be willing to be respectful of their time as long as as they're speaking, they are respectful for all of ours and they're keeping their comments to two to three minutes. Sounds like a deal. We'll let everybody consider it while we take a two-minute hiatus. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, when everyone's ready again, we'll you could signal to me by having your camera going. And we'll move, we'll move through the rest of this agenda. Okay, it looks like we have a full dais again. In that case, and Wendy, I appreciate you drawing my attention to item fourteen, assuming there's no objection, I'll go ahead and call up item fourteen, special and possible action regarding uses of Zilker Park that impact the city of Rollingwood, including but not limited to the high volume of traffic cutting through the city of Rollingwood as vehicles enter and exit Zilker Park. Yeah, this is without question become an increasingly pressing concern for us as the population in Austin generally is as has grown, as has apparently the use of Zilker Park and the frequency with which people decide to cut through our city. Both to and from the park. Amy and and Wendy, you both have spent some time really working on this. I'm happy to kind of open the floor to you if yours, some action that you wanna take alternatively. If you wanted to provide some very quick guidance to potentially open the floor to some of the residents that have joined to to provide for comments, I'm happy to to go that route as well.
I could give a quick summary of why I put the item on the agenda the way I did and then and I have one sheet on there and then Wendy has another and that may help us then and and I'm really excited that people have come to comment because my hope was that we would have comment and be able to take some action. So the the agenda item is discussion and possible action regarding uses of Zilker Park that impact the city of Rollingwood. And I think that that's rather broad, but there are additional uses besides traffic that we may want to discuss, but the the one that I highlighted was the high volumes of traffic that have been cutting through the city of Rollingwood as vehicles enter and exit Zilker Park. And so just as a little bit of historical reference, like, probably November or December of twenty twenty, we started noticing high volumes of traffic on the weekends coming out of Zilker Park between four and seven. And I know that the police department started monitoring it, started doing counts. And there were several different discussions happening that kind of culminated in February in our council meeting of making a decision to go ahead and start having more formal discussions with the city of Austin. Sarah had had seen Rob Spiller, who's the director of their transportation department, and he was willing to work on some striping. And so we have had two meetings now. Sarah's been included and myself and with an Amber and I'm forgetting everyone else who's been on the meeting, Mike, with the Department of Transportation for the city of Austin. And the first meeting that we had focused a lot just on talking about striping that we could do on Riley Road at Stratford to help put a center stripe down that might help traffic slow down more naturally. That's one way to to slow down traffic. And also, there was a discussion about things that the city of Austin might be able to do on the city of Austin side to improve that intersection so that it's not so wide, because one of the things that's happening is cars are turning off of it at really high speeds because it's so wide and then hitting a residential neighborhood. And then the other issue that was discussed is just the reality that until the city of Austin decides to change the policy regarding this giant unmanaged area on Stratford that has that they have allowed thousands of cars now to park every weekend for over the last year that we're gonna continue to have thousands of cars then coming through the city of Rollingwood as those people are leaving the park between four and seven on the weekends. And so there was a a start of a discussion about what types of policies Austin might be able to consider to mitigate that. We had a follow-up discussion on April twenty eighth with one of the members of the transportation department who indicated that they, she had been able to make contact with the neighbors on the city of Austin side who were there at that intersection. And they had been discussing different options that those neighbors were willing to consider. And so they had discussed some, like, some of those little bumpers that would go in the road that would kind of narrow the road. But then that those neighbors were really interested in a median that would actually get put in the middle of the the roadway there that would help kind of distinguish where the different lanes are. And so there was a discussion about a grant program that the city of Austin has available that's kind of a public-private transportation solution partnership, if you will, where the neighbors there were willing to put in some money. The city of Austin would apply for the grant and potentially that would be one way that they could get it done. So during that call, we were asked if the city of Rollingwood would be willing to put any money in to transportation solutions that occur on the city of Austin side of the roadway. I expressed my viewpoint that I I would not be in support of necessarily the city of Rollingwood doing that if there were residents who lived along there who wanted to contribute and participate, that would be their choice, but and my view is that there's, there's a significant number of uses of the park right now that do generate income. And I'd like to see those partners who are generating income from the park, whether it be events that come back or other uses contribute. The other thing I pointed out is that right now, if they were just to start using the system that they have all over downtown where you have to put in your zip code, I mean, your license plate into their parking system and pay to park. I mean, your license plate into their parking system and pay to park and start requiring people to actually pay in that, to pay to park in that lot. We might have enough money for parking solutions really quickly because there's thousands and thousands of cars that are parking in there every weekend. So that's kind of the, that's where we are as far as the discussions that have already happened. And I, I'm a little bit more focused on getting the city of Austin to work on some of the policies and how they're using the park and how that impacts us. And then Wendy has put a one sheet in that I think is really good, a good companion piece to this of how do we, how do we take feedback from residents in Rollingwood and look at things that we might decide to do on the Rollingwood side to mitigate some of these issues that might not be things that the city of Austin would necessarily think to do. So that's my, that's a little bit longer than a short summary. Sorry, Mike.
I'll, I'll just add to that real quick that Amy was working with Sarah on this agenda item. So she and I couldn't coordinate on it because it would be a walking forum. So that's why you see two different one sheets, although she put the agenda item in. I totally hijacked it for the same, I think, issue without us knowing that we were, you know, going to talk about the same issue of the traffic coming in from Stratford. But I'll just add that we had a traffic study done in 2001 and it looked at Rollingwood Drive, Edge Grove, Riley and Timberline. And on Riley, one of the recommendations was no left turn from Stratford. And so that was 20 years ago and the traffic has definitely increased in, in 20 years. And so the semi-divertor that could be placed in the northbound lane of Riley would prohibit cars from turning in onto Riley and cars would be able to leave on Riley and go onto Stratford, which is a little bit more of a nuclear option for the city of Austin than what Amy's proposing. But it would be a long-term, real solution for our cut-through traffic problems in the neighborhood that are actually a result of the city of Austin having a stoplight with one lane that instead of having a, a long right turn lane where people can get out of the park, everybody has to stay in one lane and wait through a light to actually be able to exit the park. And then it's just a lot easier for those people to instead head west up Stratford and cut through Rollingwood to leave Zilker Park. So again, that we'll talk about it more. I want to open it up to public comment because there's a lot more that I could say about, about how we would implement it, different strategies, but certainly want to be respectful of everybody's time and give, give our public some time to talk on it.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Everybody that's joined us, you know, some of you guys have submitted emails and letters letting us know about the situation and I want to thank you very much for taking the time to, to provide that information. At this point, if anyone wants to speak, if you would raise your hand, it's the three dots down the bottom of your screen or I can see your cameras as well. If I see you on your camera, I'll call on you. Chyna, Chyna Nada-san, hey. Oh, you're muted. Sorry. Yeah, there you go. Perfect.
Yeah. Good evening, council and mayor. We really appreciate you guys looking at this issue. We live on Riley Road and we face this problem every day. And we were appreciative that you guys granted us that stop sign at Riley and Bettis. I know that was a struggle, but then we got that. But that still hasn't helped solve the problem. A lot of the cars are, are, the stop sign doesn't even provide us with a break in traffic to back out of our driveway during those times. And then when I, when I thought, when I saw that this was on the agenda, I did talk to a few people. I don't know if Janet Benicki is here. She sent out a video that she had taken, you know, during the Christmas season. It was all red lights. It was not even ACL. It was all red lights. She sent a video and I don't think you can play that video, but, but she sent it in. And she said she's in Colorado, but if she can join, she'll join. But for me to tell that she even has a video recording. I sent you guys a picture. I sent it to the mayor right after it was taken. And these are long lines of cars and these cars don't need to be in our neighborhood. It is not just a traffic issue. It's also a safety issue. Because when these cars come here, you know, they're scouting the neighborhood. If they see lights not on, if they see situations, it's an easy opportunity for them to come in. And we have had a lot of this, you know, robbery and all of that, you know, car, car stuff going on in this part of the neighborhood. So we don't want that to happen. So we are really concerned. So we cannot take our cars out. So the best solution, I don't think it's a nuclear option. We have to protect our neighborhood and to protect our neighborhood. I think the, the, you know, the no turn, left turn from Stratford should be allowed. So I think that's the best way to solve this problem. Because, you know, we have, I've seen police cars parked now, police cars are ticketing, but it's not as much, people are following the stop sign. The reason that they are following the stop sign and traffic regulation is simply because there's so much traffic that they cannot go fast, that they have to stop and go. At that time, it's like a line of cars. So the police are not able to do anything other than show their presence. So the best way is to stop it coming in and I'd really appreciate it. And this was a study that was done in, you know, 20 years ago, 2001. It was presented to the city council and it's not a nuclear option. It's a very viable option and we as a city have to take this to protect our interests. And that only the city of Rollingwood can do, not the city of Austin. I appreciate your time. I know it's been a long evening for you all. I don't know how you guys do this every week, even one week for me was hard. Thank you.
Neither do I, Chyna, but you, thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate your feedback. Who else do we have joining us this evening? Do we have any additional hands up? So not seeing any. I do have a couple of questions that maybe Amy, Wendy, or Sarah, or anyone can maybe help me with. The, the actual intersection at Stratford, it's actually Stratford and Page and Page turns into Riley. It's my understanding that Page and Stratford are actually city of Austin. And it's when the road converts, it's right in front of, I forget the street address, but the Reese's house is, is where our property or our city limits rather actually begins. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
That's correct. And, um, you know, it would have to be wholly on the city of Rollingwood property. But as we talked about earlier, that is a very wide-necked road. And when you come up, it's, it's, you can see clearly where the, where the semi-divertor would be placed. I talked a little bit to Chief Brady about it today, just running some traps, talking through it. And, you know, kind of from a safety perspective and, you know, of course, he's, you know, going to defer to our legal team of whether or not we're allowed to do that, which I, I believe we are. Just if it's for the, the safety and welfare of our, of our residents. But one thing that we did talk about, Mayor, is, is and, and one thing that the traffic study talked about is installing temporary barriers to see how the effectiveness, see what the effectiveness is before spending money on a more permanent solution. So it's
Sorry to, sorry to interrupt you, but when you say barriers, do you mean complete access barriers or are you referring just to the, to the left turn off Stratford?
Yeah, you can see we, we put some examples in the packet of what a barrier would be. And I think, you know, there's, I couldn't find exactly what a no left turn barrier would be. But I do think that the majority of our traffic comes from people exiting the park. So a no left turn would be sufficient if we wanted to allow a right turn in. But the examples that I show are not allowing traffic at all in the northbound lane, only bikes and only allowing for vehicles to exit southbound. But if, if you look at the, the pictures that are included in the packet, and I, I can't share my screen because I'll never figure out how to do it.
You're, you're, you're okay. And I, I guess the, the question is really, and sorry, I'm seeing permanent. Do you have anything for the temporary?
Well, I'm going to bring back an agenda item there because I don't think that this agenda item is broad enough to cover us putting in an actual barrier. But I did think it was worth us discussing this right now because what I intend to do is bring an agenda item next month to put a temporary barrier, which would be a sign, perhaps some cones or some breakaway sticks at that intersection. And then to then have some time to evaluate the effectiveness of that temporary barrier. And then to work, since we're starting our budget season, which is always fun, to work to get that exemplary item into our budget. So to at that time, ask the staff to get us some pricing on what a median that is more like what's pictured in there of a permanent barrier would look like to be able to place there. And also considering if we put this temporary barrier at Riley and Page, how that might shift traffic who want to go down Riley.
Ashworth and Ridgewood.
That they might go Ashworth. Now Ridgewood is a city of Austin and Westlake Hills, and they've installed speed humps there. So there's already going to be some, it's going to take them pretty long to get up there. Once they go down, they're going to have to go over speed humps. And then they're going to have to cut through some streets. So it's going to take them a lot longer to do that. And so
Do we want to, do we want to consider speed humps in ours?
I am not talking about speed humps here, Mayor. Do not.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Put those words in my mouth, but I am talking about
No, no, and I'm not, I'm not, no, I, I actually said, are, do we want to consider them? You know, I know, I know, I know it frustrates people.
I'm not talking about speed humps because they're, they're volatile. They're, they are visceral reactions amongst people.
I do know, I understand, but, but so does, but so does line up traffic, Wendy. So does, so does line up traffic.
Okay.
And, and I, and I guess my point.
Sorry. Let me just finish. The barrier that would keep people from turning onto the street and keep traffic from cutting through the street would be something that would be non-impactful to our residents because in, in the grand scheme of things, they're not cutting through the neighborhood. So it's, it's just to keep people from cutting through the neighborhood.
All right. Well.
Let me, can I get
Point taken. Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Sarah.
So you're talking about putting a barrier in the intersection?
No, apparently it's after they've already entered the intersection and have committed to a left turn, at which point they would reach a barrier when it comes into our city. So I guess that was kind of some of the point that I was going to make.
It would, they would have to put a no left turn sign in city of Austin because it would not be allowed to have a left turn there.
So I don't know that the city of Austin would necessarily have to do anything, but that it would make sense for them to do it. But it would make sense for them to do a lot of things that they haven't done. Sarah, go ahead, please.
Well, I was going to say, because we can't, we cannot do anything in the city of Austin. We would have to work with the city of Austin to make some changes. And they have been looking at that. I mean, that's something that we were talking with Rob about back in February when we had our meeting. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're clear that, that we have to work with them in order to get anything done on the city of Austin. And all we could put in on our own would be something in, on Riley after the intersection and people could have already turned in there. And then that can make it, then they have to turn around and get back out, you know, so that can cause me
Yeah, if you drive up there, if, if you pretend that you're somebody exiting Stratford and just take a, a drive up there and then as you drive up, look over and pretend that you're going to take a left turn and then just notice where the first house ends and where the city of Austin would begin. I, I think anyone who made a, a left turn into a big red do not enter sign that is clearly visible from the road there would be just doing it because they want to do a U-turn and not because they can actually think that they could take a left turn there. I, I think if you drive it, it, it's a lot easier to appreciate. And I think that just starting this conversation will give everybody a little time to, to start taking a look at it. But I do intend to bring it back to council for consideration at the next city council meeting. And, and I have talked to the chief about it a little bit and I, I would like him and, and our officers to evaluate it as well. But I, I do think it's a viable option and probably the best option we have as a city to be able to defend our borders and, and stop the cut-through traffic that is really, really causing a quality of life and safety issue for our citizens.
Yeah, my, my concern with putting a barrier like that on entry into Rollingwood would just encourage people to swerve around it. And, and, you know, drive on the wrong side of the road to get around. The same thing that they have problems with on speed humps is people trying to drive around the speed humps. And so it doesn't, it doesn't really prevent people from coming in. It just causes more problems.
And Chief Brady, if somebody were to drive around on the wrong side of the road of a do not enter sign, what would be the violation there?
Right on the wrong side of the road. It'd be, you know, operating their vehicle on the wrong side of the road. They'd be subject to citation. But of course, you know, any, any traffic violation would have to be witnessed by our officers.
Do you think that the majority of people driving would be willing to drive on the wrong side of the road to drive around a do not enter sign in your
I don't think the majority would, but you know, certainly there, there's a, I couldn't give you a number, but there's a percentage that may and, and you know, that when you got a vehicle coming the wrong way, that's, that's certainly concerning. But, and, and as we discussed and, and, you know, I think the, the mayor and some, some others have weighed in. The, the fact that we don't own that little piece of page, I think, you know, the potential for a bottleneck is something we have to, to look at. I know when we're doing, when we block that off for a trail of lights and, and stuff to be more effective, we've actually brought our barricades right up to page, but we're there to man them and, you know, we can check IDs. You, you can't do that sort of thing with a, with a fixed barricade or, or barrier. But nonetheless, I mean, we could, there, there may be that are you a temporary setup to just set something there and kind of monitor how it goes before investing in a, in a more permanent solution?
Thank you. And so I guess my, I would, I would just want to ask city staff or direct city staff if they could get some pricing for placing a temporary barrier at Riley and Page, which would include a sign and maybe Chief, do you think breakaway sticks or cones would be more appropriate for a temporary barrier? With a, with a sign that says do not enter?
You know, the, the city already has the, the barricades that we use for the ACL and for the, you know, flooding that we, we put across B caves. There, there's sort of metal stands with, with, I want to say there, I'm going to guesstimate they're six or seven feet long of, you know, they're enough to block a lane, a traffic lane. Or the, the majority of it where a car couldn't get in, they're not, they're not very attractive. But I mean, those are, those are some devices that we have right now with the, the white and, and sort of reflective yellow caution pattern.
Like you would put up for construction? I, I'm afraid that might be more confusing.
Well, I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to include signage with it, but you know, I, I mean, we could, the, the, the thing about that is, is if, you know, we could monitor it and if, and those could be moved to the side immediately if, if there was an issue, there, there's no sort of permanent. And there might be a similar solution that's like that. But I would recommend before we do anything that if we're going to try it, Do anything that if we're gonna try it, we we have some sort of a device that we can manually just move right out of the way if it turns out that. You know, it's adversely impacting traffic flow or or traffic safety in some fashion that maybe we hadn't anticipated.
Great. Um the other thing I would ask staff to uh look into is uh. The pricing information for a uh permanent. Solution and and I'll work with the staff to to uh you know. Figure out what the um. Median would look like and kind of what the um dimensions would be, but uh just. Would like to work with staff on getting some pricing information on that. So we'll have that information when I bring it back.
So Wendy, what the City of Austin is working on uh with the neighbors there, they offered first painting. And that's something they thought they could do right away. They said when they talked to the neighbors that live in Austin around there, they wanted. Permanent solution like you're suggesting. Um if if Rollingwood, if the council's interested in. Paying for our own solution, I might suggest that we go ahead and pay for Austin. To go ahead and design this work and and put it in.
Is there is there's a semi diverter or is it just a median and it still keeps it open um so that traffic can still turn there?
I think they were open to different solutions. At that point, they were just talking to the neighbors about. Some sort of traffic calming as they came around um came around the corner. I I don't know, they probably have to go back to the neighbors and see if they were in support of a basically no left-hand turn lane in. Onto page there. Uh but it's something we could explore with them.
Yeah, I I'm willing to to definitely work with the City of Austin. I I do think that they would be reluctant to. Put in a no left turn because that's where most of their traffic is exiting the park from and. And just slowing the traffic isn't fixing our cut-through traffic problem. So I I I don't know that. Unless they're willing to do something uh more in line with what would actually protect our citizens. Um I think we're probably gonna have to pay for designing our own. Traffic dampening or stop, you know, stopper for that area um diverter. And um it it was, it was in the two thousand and one traffic. Uh calming study from twenty years ago, it was warranted then. So um you know, I think that. That i- it is definitely worth exploring right now uh on on a temporary basis to see. How it's working. Um I'll bring it back at the next city council meeting and we'll we'll get to vote on it and we'll see if if it goes through or not, but. If it if it does show to be effective, I would like to to budget for a permanent solution uh that the City of Rollingwood would install.
So the two houses that are on the corner of Page and Stratford on. On our side of the of Stratford, where are their driveways?
They are um.
Are they on page?
Yeah, they're on the page side. But we've, I've talked to the neighbors and they're in support of it, and I think it can be designed in a way that it won't impede them from exiting their driveway.
Well, does it impede them from turning left onto their driveway from Stratford?
It it impedes everybody from turning on left from Stratford onto their uh onto Riley.
So then they can't get into their own driveways unless they're coming from the other direction.
Nobody can go onto Riley with a left turn unless they're coming from the other direction. Because it is meant to stop people from turning on Stratford to Riley.
I'm pretty sure they wouldn't like having that restriction on getting into their own driveways.
Uh they actually are very much in support of of having that there, actually.
If they're coming from downtown, they have to go through Rollingwood to get to their own houses.
Yes.
Are you guys? Wendy, you've talked to the neighbors that are in the City of Austin side?
No, I'm talking about the neighbors in Rollingwood, the recent.
So I'm talking about the neighbors in in the City of Austin, the people that live in the city.
We can't put it on City of Austin property. If if. It it can, it will only be in City of Rollingwood property and their driveways are on page, not on Riley.
Right.
So we can't put it on page.
Right, but a left turn, a no left turn sign. Would need to be in the City of Austin. Right?
A a sign would, but the actual barrier would have to be in Rollingwood.
Right. So the people that live on those corners in the City of Austin would just have to ignore the sign and turn left anyway to get into their own driveways.
Right, they could, because they could access their own driveways and they're not. Cut through traffic and they're not presumably not going down Riley to get to their house if they live right there. They'd be able to still access their own home.
Um I'll say that I I I still have some questions about this, but I'm really looking forward to seeing it. Further fleshed out and also potentially looked at as something that we tried out. On weekends between four and seven, especially on nicer weekends and until the City of Austin might actually start managing. That um parking area. Um if we were able to have an officer on it and just see what the. What the reality of it is and then potentially in conjunction with also using um. Google Maps to mark those areas as blocked off because. The combination of those two things could really change the routes that um people are allowed to take. And then over time, those metrics will affect the algorithm and fewer cars will be sent by the apps that way. So. There might be a way to kind of integrate in technology as well. Um.
That's a great point, because I think a lot of people do go that way because they're led by their app, that it's gonna be the shortest way out. So if you close those roads like we we did during the um trail of lights, then it would uh make it take longer in the app.
Um I mean, ultimately, I'd like to see, I mean, my my one sheet is to, I I think one of the. One of the issues that we've seen is that in the in the meetings that we've had with the City of Austin Transportation is we've had two meetings in a row. Where we've been told that we're gonna be allowed to comment on different parts of the Zilker. Uh vision process that's happening right now. And the um which is the Zilker Master Planning Process. And and so far that those connections have not actually been made to the people who are doing that. Vision planning and so.
So I was gonna say, didn't Amber just go to a meeting yesterday?
Yeah, um I was not aware that this of of this meeting. Tom Farrell actually forwarded me the invite. And I didn't know the scope of what we were going to be commenting on. But from what it appeared, that was going to be our only meeting to comment. Um luckily, we were with the Zilker, uh Vice President of the Zilker Neighborhood Association. Um Barton Hills Neighborhood Association and another neighborhood association. Um basically, what they said is do not think that, you know, this one meeting is your. You're checking the box that this is, this is the comment. We we want continuous feedback. We feel like this could be a good partnership. Um what we also communicated to them. Was that uh Rollingwood needed a seat and that is it the tag, tag? Um it's uh it's an entity of the different uh communities and and other entities. Um so we're looking for that. Um and then the other thing, you know, and I I of course told them I didn't realize. Uh that we were going to be asked all those questions and neither did anybody else. I would have had our Chief of Police there. I would have had, of course. You, Amy, there, um having worked on this for so long. Um our other message, I think we've got some really good allies with the neighborhood associations. Their. Their comment back to them was uh. Keep Zilker Park uh apart, a nature park and not an amusement park. And so they wanted fewer events. Um which would, you know, obviously, we had a lot of discussion about um the traffic problems. And then um my message was Rollingwood is very opposed to a parking garage there. And um and at that time, we didn't know about the homeless camp sites. Also, so we would say we would be opposed to to those, as we don't think that would, that's a compassionate option for the homeless. Um so anyway, I was going to inform all of you that that had happened. Um and make sure that we get more attention, more seats at the table. I'm not sure why Tom Farrell was invited and. You know, the current uh council members were not, um staff was not notified. I don't, I don't know why that happened that way, but I think we have um good allies. And maybe now we'll have more of a voice in this vision plan.
So I I really appreciate hearing that update. Um my concern right now, based on some conversations I've had with different people. Who are actively part of this process is um and then also with my experience previously with. The City of Austin and we've just seen it with the Austin Energy issue that we'll get to is. We're actually not a neighborhood association or a homeowners association. We're a city with our own police department. Which means that when the City of Austin decides to do things that then place burdens on our city. It falls on our taxpayer dollars to fund the police force to respond to those things. And so in the past, um when I started going to special event meetings, when I first got on the council. I kept on getting put in the meetings with the neighborhood associations and I do have good relationships with several of them as well. Um I don't think that's an appropriate place for our city to be making the comments because. I'm not sure that we're actually in alignment with some of the neighborhood associations. Um the neighborhood associations. Um are the reason that um the majority of the traffic for special events now enters. From this side of MOPAC instead of through Barton Springs. Prior to the neighborhood associations getting involved, the traffic entered from both directions. They then shut off Barton Springs as being an access point for the events in any way. So I think that that's the, so we, I I think that um I think we can align in some ways, but I also think that as a city. In this particular instance, um as they're doing long-term planning, I think we probably need four or five meetings. I think we need um to ask the city manager for the City of Austin to recognize us as a city entity. And not as a neighborhood association or an HOA. And there needs to be some. Uh very focused constructive conversations around a number of issues. So um I can imagine though. If if like getting thrown into one of those meetings, I've I my first one that I went to, I felt very thrown into it and. Um just and and that's kind of the experience. Um unless we specifically request our own meetings. And I would say that on the special event transportation issue side in the past, until we got our own meetings, we didn't get anything done. And so I that that's why I have this on the agenda for us to to send a letter specifically to Mayor Adler and City Manager Kronk. To establish a series of meetings that would occur where we as a city would be giving input on this issue.
Agreed, and and that's what we communicated too. We did have a discussion about how our, you know, really was. Place is different because we are a city. Um so. Yeah, but they they didn't go through the proper channels to notify the proper people. And they have not put us on that tag committee or whatever it is. Um so once again, they're kind of. Ignoring us or not paying attention to us. And that's disappointing.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I finally just put this on the agenda because um I think that until we have a formal letter going. We probably aren't going to get um any type of additional attention. And or we're gonna get treated like a neighborhood association, which neighborhood associations do vote and they do have boards. Um but they don't have police departments and they don't get to uh make decisions about code. And a lot of other functions that we as a council have to do and and they don't, they don't get to make decisions about public safety. Like our police chief has to make for our city. Um they have a police department that's making that for them. And so I think. There's some, there's some really important differences. Um and so in in my, like I. I made the agenda item broad enough where we would talk about current uses and then also their future uses. I would say that. Um the city getting to have um specific back and forth where it's not just a meeting and we show up and they have three. Polling questions for us to do, right? But like um we actually get to have. Conversations that are directed at issues that they're looking at as part of their vision planning. That would impact our city um and have the opportunity to reflect on them and gather information and comment. Um then I think there's the issue right now of the regular traffic issues that are coming from this use of the. Area in the park, which I'm not gonna go into why it is there and how um. Why it hasn't been improved, but there was an attempt to actually. Uh formalize the area and provide pedestrian safety in the past, um that the Zilker Neighborhood Association opposed. Um then I think we have event traffic issues that are about to come back up. And I think it would be good to go ahead and get formal discussions going about how that may be similar or different from previous years. Um and then we have safety issues um like China brought up um that are now happening in our city. Um we also have pedestrian safety issues. And then the final one I have on my list is the fire risks. And we have that great map coming up from our Austin um energy presentation that shows. That we're in the high-risk fire area. And so um having a more collaborative effort with the City of Austin on. What types of things they're policing over in the preserve areas. Um we had the the fire recently. Right over there on the edge of the preserve um and how that could impact our city. And. I think there's, so I think there's a number of different topics that I'd like to see uh a little more focused conversation on. But I thought I would see if there's any other topics too, because those are the ones that were on my list of things that. Um this, when the the things that are happening on the City of Austin side that are impacting our city and public safety choices that we're having to make.
There I see Gina with his hand up. Do you wanna call on him?
Sure, go ahead, Jenna.
We can certainly get the City of Austin's attention if we assert ourselves. And by doing this as a temporary thing at the corner where Stratford to Riley, the turn is stopped. At the the City of Rollingwood, uh I think, you know, uh we can show them that. We are serious about protecting our citizens' interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
So like, I I also wanna make sure that we don't. I mean, we've been having meetings with the City of Austin Transportation Department.
Right.
They they are working with us. I don't want us to go. Running off and doing something on our own that. Negates any of the goodwill and and working relationship that we're just trying to get started with. With the Transportation Department.
Sarah, that would be.
They're trying to get their attention. I think we've uh we we've.
That would be so out of character for us, though, Sarah.
Well, I Sarah, I can I I just wanna say one thing. I I really appreciated um Sarah being on the call and working on the striping issue. I do think that we're reaching a point where Wendy and I are both transportation liaisons, and so it's made it really difficult for us to coordinate. And for she and I to try to mitigate um ideas. And so it's made it really difficult for us to coordinate and for she and I to try to mitigate, um, ideas before meeting. So I think we've seen an example of that here where, um, like normally because we're transportation liaisons, we would have vetted this more thoroughly before the meeting and thought through all the different interests. And so we're doing that here. So it's, it's possible, Sarah, that we would be able to get a little bit more, um, of a cohesive plan if, if I bump Wendy back into being the second person on those conversations since she's the transportation liaison. If you feel comfortable with that, I know that you had the initial conversation with Rob and he was willing to do striping. Um, but the conversation has definitely expanded beyond that. So how, how does that sound to you?
I just want to make sure that we don't go running off. I mean, I used personal friendship with Rob to get this conversation started. And I don't want the city good to go running off and, and, you know, for lack of a better word, being rude. When we, when we have started this process with them, um, and, and to, you know, to damage that, I'm, I'm fine not being involved in the process. But I, again, I don't want, I don't want the city to take advantage of that connection that we got started with and, and to not be, um.
Respectful of that relationship. Now, I know that firsthand, actually.
I, I, I totally, I totally agree. Yeah. And I have, um, I have personally put my reputation on the line multiple times for the city and gotten things started. And, um, with the city of Austin and then tried to work them through and had neighbors choose to take actions or other council members choose to take actions that then negated the work that I've tried to do. And so I, I can appreciate that. Um, much of it has revolved around the park and different connections I have. Um, so I, I, I really respect that, Sarah. And I want, I think that if you, if you, if you couldn't tell from the last conversation, like, I just really want them to stripe things. I mean, I would, I would love for the commitments that city of Austin and Techsot have made in the past for them to stripe areas that just need striping for that to happen. That would be phenomenal. And so, um, that's why in the conversation we had with them, I kind of refocused it at the end on, like, these are all great ideas, these mediums and other solutions. But we've, like, we've just been asking for striping for five years in different areas. And that's a, that's a simple solution. So I would, I would love, I would love for those things to happen first. Um, I am respectful of that too. I also, you know, I, I served with Rob on the, on the tack and we see each other in other settings and I hadn't asked him for help on this. So I appreciate that you asked for help and I wanted to include you. Um, and I, I want to make sure that we continue that. But I would say that at this point, um, the other issue is we could, we can stripe. But if they don't change some of the policies about the type of traffic that's also being sent through the city, we're just going to have, we're, we're going to get a little bit of the solution then, but we're not going to get everything. So that's what I'm, I'm wondering if it, if, if we can try to start, like, putting Wendy and I back as transportation liaisons to work things out behind the scenes and then have a little bit more cohesive, um, vision point. Cause I do think, I mean, we didn't propose to the city of Austin, what if we worked together on literally changing the configuration of this intersection? And so I think it might be worth going back to them to just float that out there and see how they would respond to it.
We did talk to them about some of that at the first meeting.
I didn't, we didn't talk about closing a road down.
We did not talk about closing the road down. We did talk about some changes in the size of the lane and the orientation of the lanes. And, you know, things that would reduce speed predominantly. But we did, we did talk about changing some of the configuration of the intersection from that standpoint.
Yeah. And I think it's, so at this point, I think it's a two-part problem. I think it's the intersection configuration and I think it's the type of traffic that's coming in. And so the, what Wendy has proposed, I, I do see, I see some problems with it, but I also see some merit with it because it actually addresses both issues. And the solutions that we've been talking to the city of Austin about right now only address the first issue. Um, and they haven't really seemed receptive to my different ideas about actually mitigating the large volumes of cars coming out of the parking lot.
And they have the problem at their stoplight at, um, Barton Springs and Stratford, which, you know, I think if, if the solution of not wanting to cut through traffic in Rollingwood, um, is helping traffic to get out the other way. And so if they're willing to work with us to help find a better way for traffic to exit the park without having to come west and go around the park through our city, that would be wonderful. And we wouldn't need to shut down our roads because then we wouldn't be the exit point, the primary exit point for so many of these people leaving the park. Um, but again, you know, Amy and I were not able to work together on this agenda item. So you can see how I went in a direction of speaking with all of the neighbors, uh, trying to find what, uh, our traffic studies had done and trying to find some solutions that, that protect our neighborhood. But not being aware and not having been a part of those conversations with the city of Austin doesn't make me rude or anyone rude. It just makes me not in the know of what happened because it would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act for three council members to have worked on that project together. So, um, I think, uh, we could work to find some solutions to solve these problems that would protect our neighborhood. But ultimately, my priority are the citizens of Rollingwood. And, um, I'd like to have the city of Austin work with us. And I'd like to see improvements made that will address this problem. But I don't know, and I can't affect the change over there. But I know that we have some options that we should explore that would protect our own citizens.
All right, council, we've had quite a bit of discussion. Uh, do we have anybody that is interested taking action?
Um, I, it's, wait, there we go. Sorry. Uh, I have a motion, um, to, well, I guess mayor, if we, if I, I'm going to make a motion to send an official request from the city of Rollingwood to the city of Austin, to Mayor Adler and to City Manager Kronk. Would you like for that to be from you or do you want it to be from Amber?
I have absolutely no problem, um, asking, uh, the mayor and, and, uh, city manager to take a, a much closer look and a very serious look at how their, uh, impact or how their, uh, actions are impacting, uh, traffic, uh, in Rollingwood. And I have absolutely no issue whatsoever, uh, indicating in that letter, uh, to both Mayor Adler, um, and, uh, uh, Mr. Kronk that, uh, uh, we're being put in a position where we are going to have to take some level of action. And, uh, it just makes a heck of a lot more sense for us to work together, uh, in a collaborative fashion, uh, not just here, but on any number of issues. Um, I've got absolutely no issue sending that. As a matter of fact, I would encourage that. It's a consistent message that's come out of, you know, our city hall and, and for me, uh, for at least the last three years. That said, uh, I hope everybody on this call understands, uh, that, um, you know, we're not, we're not a stakeholder with the city of Austin, right? Uh, just like Austin isn't a stakeholder in the city of Rollingwood. We have got to figure out a way, uh, generally speaking, to encourage the city of Austin, um, to work with us. And, uh, you know, we've attempted to do that in the past. And the short answer is, uh, some actions that we have been unable to, and, and, and tasks that we've been unable to get done on the city of Rollingwood's side, uh, have, you know, undercut our credibility or certainly indicated that we are not as easy to work with as, uh, they might otherwise, uh, wish that we were and thereby, um, just kind of generally take us out of conversations. So as long as we're willing to push forward, um, on a solution and as a community, we can actually back that, uh, push forward and are willing to do that. Um, then absolutely, let's do it. Otherwise, um, you know, sending a letter over and, and not backing it up with, uh, um, a, uh, a united community in, in really worth much in, in my impression. So, um, I don't know if that helps, uh, with, with your question, Amy. But, you know, that's, happy to do it. Uh, as a matter of fact, we've been trying to do that kind of stuff for years, right? Uh, before I got on, uh, took this position, when we were trying to do the same thing when I was on council. So if, uh, the community wants to get together and, and not throw the brakes on something because they don't like to have a discussion around speed cushions because it might inconvenience them for 15 seconds on their drive home. Um, great, right? But if that's a sensitivity and we're not willing to push on that, uh, and, you know, we just want to make sure that other people aren't driving through our community, but we're not willing to put anything in place uh, because it might also inconvenience us in some form or fashion. It's, I don't know how you're going to have that conversation intelligently. That said, I'm still willing to, uh, put the conversation, uh, over, uh, to the city of Austin. Um, I would just encourage us to have a realistic impression of what we hope to accomplish. And then put it, as I mentioned before, make sure we're putting a united, uh, uh, front forward from our community on that solution.
I, I appreciate that messaging and I think that the, uh, meetings that we've had with Austin Energy so far, for me, have reflected a really great collaborative opportunity for, um, Austin Energy to understand better, um, the issues that we were having and for us to understand what they're doing and to fill in communication gaps and information gaps. And that alone has been, I think, one of the more valuable things that I have done in 2021. Um, so I, like, my hope is that, um, we would, we would have.
Do something similar for the transportation side.
Right. And also I think there's, I, I think there's a need for, like, I have a, you know, I have a list of things here. Um, I think there's the, the transportation as it relates to how they're developing their master plan. And then I think there's also the pedestrian elements and how they're implementing their, or trying to decide the things. And then I think there's the fire risk issues that, um, and all of those, I think, are things that Chief Brady has, has shown that he's really, really adept at understanding on behalf of our community and speaking on behalf of our community and negotiating. I've seen him do that really well, um, with the special event issues that we've had so far. And so I think he would be like, I think even having those meetings where he's able to be in the room with people who, um, may not have that perspective. Because there's, there's not anyone else that's going to be in the room that's helping, um, the people who are making the decisions about the Zilker Plan understand how, what they do in Zilker Park might then impact our city um, and the safety issues in our city. And so I think that, that, I think that, I, I do think there's a lot of cooperation that's happening, um, through Chief Brady with improving public safety. So I, I think there, I think there could be a really positive thing from that. And then I think the other part is just, um, like we saw with, like, we've seen with some of the different special events that, um, like with Trail of Lights two years ago, that, you know, we had, we had a solution that we came into the meeting with after the gridlock in our city and the city of Austin had another solution. And, um, then the two got to be done together. And so, uh, I think there's an opportunity here for collaboration like that too. Um, so.
Well, I am certainly happy, I'm certainly happy to just help facilitate, uh, that level of collaboration, um, and, uh, do what we can to get this done. I, I completely agree, uh, that, uh, this is a persistent and has been a persistent problem, um, for us for years. And it's, uh, without question increasing, um, with regards to fire and other usages in the park. Um, in, in the Zilker Park generally, we also understand that that spills right over into the Zilker Preserve and conversations that we've tried to have there. Um, uh, this also spills over into, uh, conversations that the city of Austin has had with regards to, uh, camping, uh, in the park, uh, which is also part, uh, ties directly into your fire hazard. Although I appreciate, uh, your, um, deftly maneuvering around, uh, a sensitive topic, uh, such as camping. Um, again, uh, you know, it's, uh, we have been working on these issues and, and trying to hold hands with the city of Austin and, and, uh, the various stakeholders, uh, in Zilker, uh, for years. And inevitably, uh, we come to what seems to be maybe not a perfect solution for everyone, but certainly a really good solution. Uh, and consistently we have a track record of allowing, uh, perfect, uh, to be the enemy of, of really good and certainly, uh, much better than what we have. So, um, I am, uh, always willing to be a standard bearer and, and, you know, lead us into that conversation and, and hopefully facilitate that. Um, I do agree with you, uh, Chief Brady is phenomenal and has a tremendous track record, uh, in, in helping facilitate getting these things done. Um, so the short answer is, uh, yes, uh, I'd, I'd, I'd happily send, um, a letter uh, from the mayor of Rollingwood, uh, to that effect. Um, Wendy, you have your hand up?
Uh, I'm, uh, if you're finished, um, I did, I don't want to interrupt this item because I know Amy was making a motion to send a letter and, or was it a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt that. So once you're done with that, then I will.
Okay. Um, one more thing I'll say before I make my motion is the other issue. I, I actually took the survey for the, uh, Zilker Vision Survey and I posted it and tried to encourage people to take it. One of the things they asked a lot about was the Zilker Clubhouse uses. And so I think that that's another area where it would behoove us as a city probably to, um, to ask more about what they're planning there and if there's any changes in use. Um, because that's an area where we do have the, uh, additional jurisdiction. But, um, I know that I get texts from neighbors when there's unexpected things happening over there.
I would have made a pretty good, um, event center for the city of Rollingwood, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get that through this.
I certainly don't think we're going to do that, um, either. I think any possibility of that ever having been, being an opportunity, uh, that ship sailed. Um, in any case, um, so, uh, do we have, do we have a motion?
I have a motion. Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to add that. Um, I would, I, I would move to, uh, request that the mayor, um, send an official request from the city of Rollingwood to Mayor Adler and City Manager Kronk for requesting a series of meetings between the city of Austin and city of Rollingwood, um, to collaborate on input from the city of Rollingwood regarding current uses of Zilker Park and the Zilker Vision Planning Process with regards to addressing traffic, public safety and other issues that impact the city of Rollingwood.
Second.
Motion from Amy, second from Wendy. Um, floor is open for discussion. Wendy, you have your hand raised?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not about that, but, um, thank you, Amy, for bringing this agenda item forward and for, um, setting up some, uh, meetings to give us a, a seat at the table, um, with the city of Austin instead of with neighborhood groups. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness, um, of, of trying to advocate, uh, as a city in, in a more effective way. And so thank you for doing that. And thank you, mayor, for agreeing to send the letter. But I will stop there and then I have something else on my part of the agenda I want to add after we vote on this.
Call the vote then. Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Amy Patilla?
Aye.
The vote carries, um, council, we interested in taking, uh, additional action on item 14?
Uh, I'm not, uh, looking to take official action. I just wanted to make sure it's, uh, okay with the members of the city council and mayor if I work with the city staff to investigate a temporary barrier for Riley Road and what the cost or what it might look like. And then also, um, investigate the cost of a permanent barrier for Riley Road or even Ashworth so that we can have that information discussed at a future meeting. And that, if that's okay with you, it'd just be more direction that it's okay with the council that. And that, if that's okay with you, it'd just be more direction that it's okay with the council that I work with, the staff on that.
Um, that's okay with me. I I think it it is in a actual study that we have for our city, even though traffic has increased over time. Um yeah, yeah, I I'm interested also in the the temporary aspect of how that might give us some flexibility um on weekends if the, if the chief needed the op, like, needed the infrastructure to be able to choose um to make some changes in in the type of traffic that's allowed through the roadway if there was, if there were safety issues.
Does that sound okay for you, Sarah, if we investigate that and um look at what options that we might have or for that intersection? Mayor, you all right with that?
Yeah, no problem.
Just, just wanna make sure everybody is all right with that. So thank you.
Okay, um in that instance, we can move on um to uh our next item, assuming there's nothing else on fourteen, council. Uh we'll go back to item eleven. Discussion possible action to select a financial institution for banking services for the city of Rollingwood and the Rollingwood Community Development Corporation and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with services to begin August one, twenty twenty one and extend through July thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Uh council, I anticipate this to be a fairly straightforward and easy one for us. Yes, ma'am, Ashley?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think for um item ten, I'm not sure we took a vote on the um budget adjustment. That was this, an item after item nine.
Okay, sorry, I have it marked off, but uh tell you what, if you don't have the vote, let's go ahead and call for it, please. Um if memory serves, um I tell you what, Ashley, just to be very, very clear, do you have the motion on the table, please?
Um, there is not a motion.
We don't have a motion. Okay, got it. Uh in that instance, uh so for ten, oh, I see what we've done. My my apologies. We we took action on nine, but not on ten. Uh thank you for that. Discussion possible action on ordinance authorizing a budget adjustment, the amount of six thousand dollars to fund additional work associated with the uh easement location. So council, we did approve the six thousand dollars now, where we're approving the budget amendment. If you have a motion, please. From Wendy, mo- motion from Wendy. Uh do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy, um assuming no discussion. Uh Wendy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Thank you, Amy.
Aye.
Thank you. Um okay, uh and Ashley, thank you again for keeping me on track. Um item eleven, discussion of possible action to select a financial institution for banking services. Uh guys, I suspect this is going to be pretty easy for us. As we know, uh we are required to uh review our third-party contracts every five years. Um this is where we are now. Uh uh I believe staff has, uh I'm sure actually staff went out with an RFP. We had two respondents, um one being our existing uh institution. Uh staff uh consulted with me very briefly uh and put forward that there was a clear uh, a very clear uh winner preference, uh stronger bid, if you will, uh from our existing. And uh encouraged us uh to take uh, I guess, re-up in in that um in that framework. Amber, is that a fair uh assessment, not putting too many words in your mouth?
Yeah, that's a fair assessment. We've um, it it costs the city no money to to be at this financial institution. We've had great uh customer service with them. Uh and then it just saves a lot of headache of, you know, changing checks and banks and all the things that go along with changing the banks. Um so we feel like we would, we would like to stay with First Citizens.
Great. Um I would, I would agree with you. I think it's, they've been a great service for us. Um council, uh do you have uh inclined to take action here?
Um I moved to approve the selection of First Citizens Bank for banking services for the city of Rollingwood and the Rollingwood Community Development Corporation and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with services to begin August first, twenty twenty one, and extend through July thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Thank you, Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh any discussion, council? Not hearing any. Wendy?
Aye.
Sarah?
I was gonna ask a question.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Maybe not a question, maybe it's just a statement. It it's with all of the banks that we have in Rollingwood. It's really sad that that we don't work with the bank in Rollingwood.
It's un, it's unfortunate, none, none of the banks in Rollingwood wanted to work with us.
If they even knew about the proposal, but yes, anyway, I'm fine, yes.
Amy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, council.
Did Sarah actually vote?
Uh I caught an eye at the end. Did I mishear you?
No, I voted.
Great.
Thank you. Item twelve, discussion possible action on ordinance adopting a vested rights process and permit expiration. Carrie, uh we still have you. I know you worked a long day.
Yes, I'm I'm hanging in here.
I know, you're a true burn. I thank you very much for it. It's it, would you like to frame this for us before uh, you know, Charlie really gives us a level of context?
Uh sure, this um we, you saw vested rights item uh last month, uh recommended by council that we adopt an ordinance uh consistent with what other cities have adopted to put some uh parameters on projects that would limit, you know, of a property owner's ability to uh request uh vested status beyond a certain point, so.
Right, and um so council, we're all very clear on what that means, right? Yep, looking for a little acknowledgement, even a head nod.
Talking chapter two forty-five vested rights.
Yes, there you go. There you go. Thank you very much, Amy. Um okay, uh so then I'm gonna save uh our attorney's um uh voice and uh ask if there is action um to be taken uh on the dais today.
Uh I would move to adopt the ordinance, adopt, wait, I would move to adopt an ordinance uh for vested, a vested rights process and permit expiration.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second it for discussion. Can we get a, a non-legal description of what this does for all the other people that are listening in to?
I'm I'm happy to give the best non-legal description I can. Unfortunately, it's a legal issue. So s, so state law says that an individual who files a permit that is necessary in a series of permits is vested under the laws in place at the time the original permit was filed. And we currently do not have a system in place or process in place for some to claim they have vested rights for somebody to, uh for the city to require someone to prove evidence of their right to be invested under some ordinance that was adopted fifteen or twenty years ago. And this puts in place a process that um requires an applicant to go through if they believe they have vested rights. It makes a clean process for everybody to know and understand how we make a determination with respect to vested rights.
So does this also include anything that puts an expiration date on their vested rights?
Yeah, it would. So that would be, you know, one of the well, I it, this indirectly affects that, I guess, because we have, we have gone through the process of placing expiration dates on projects and we have gone through the process of placing expiration dates on permits. And so now um individuals vested rights will expire under a permit or a project after the applicable period of time. However, that doesn't mean that people, developers, people who are developing under a project or a previous permit, won't argue that they still have vested rights regardless of the fact that there's an expiration date on the permit. And this creates a process by which we can have that discussion. They provide their evidence that they have, that they're, that they're vested, can analyze that evidence and and provide an answer through a, through a established process instead of ad hoc, which is the way we're doing it now.
But it, but it doesn't solve the issue of somebody filing a permit application twenty years ago or saying, I'm gonna build a, you know, an office building or whatever, twenty years ago, and then having them claim that they can still build under the rules that were in place twenty years ago when they have made no progress on it in that, in that time.
That's correct. This does not solve um um a person's, you know, argument or right under the, under the law. It simply provides the process by which we can determine as the city whether or not they're actually entitled to the vested right they say they're entitled to.
So we would have to take further action in order to put a limit on the duration for their vested rights?
We've already done that.
And it's not that expiration date of the permit?
It's a net, we have placed expiration dates in permits and we have placed expiration dates on projects. But that, but that doesn't mean that they're not entitled to a vested right, even though there's an expiration date on a project or a permit. Because under the law, so long as they are making um progress towards completion of the project or progress towards completion of whatever the permit was for, there's, it's, they're still entitled to be vested even though five years may have passed since the project began, or two years may have passed since they were issued the permit. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish the process whereby they can make those arguments if they believe that they're entitled to those vested rights. And the city can then make a determination as to whether or not we agree with them. And currently, there is no process in place and we're handling it on an ad hoc basis.
Okay, well, I I understand the need to have a process in place. I'm also, I guess, a little I don't know, confused, not necessarily the right word, but I mean, I deal with state permits. That's my job, right? So um for permits from the TCQ, they have a they have a duration. You're allowed one um extension. And then at the end of that, the permit's expired if you have not completed construction. And you have to start all over again with the current rules that are in place if you have not made progress. You know, you've not completed progress on that project. And and I'm thinking that that is the same sort of thing that we need to have here because the rules can change. And I I don't like the idea of somebody building a building using twenty-year-old rules because twenty years ago, they said, yeah, I think I'm gonna build something here.
I I fully agree with that sentiment. The problem that we have is the Texas Legislature quite a while ago, adopted chapter two forty-five of the Texas Local Government Code, which is not applicable to the state. So your, your experience with permits is an apples-to-oranges comparison with respect to how a municipality deal with permits. Because chapter two forty-five does not apply to state permits. It only applies to permits issued by a subdivision of the state, such as a county, a school district, or a city. And they created different rules that municipalities have to deal with than what the state has to deal with. And the rules that they created say that if a developer um gets a permit and so long as they are making um um progress towards um completion of that, of that project, then they are entitled to continue to work under the rules that were in place at the time that permit was issued. And the statute goes on to state that um progress towards completion of a project includes an application for a final plat or a plan, a good faith attempt is made to file with a regulatory agency an application for a permit. Or, here's the very broad one, costs have been incurred for developing the project, including without limitation costs associated with railway, utility, and infrastructure facilities designed to serve in whole or part the project in the aggregate amount of five percent of the most recent appraisal value. And so in reality, someone could file for a permit twenty years ago and every four or five years, spend some money in engineering and would continue to be vested under that project until such time as they stopped at doing that. And that's what the state says with respect to municipalities.
So the state, as they do way too often, has one set of rules for their own stuff. And they impose a different set of rules on cities.
Yes, ma'am, just like the Texas Open Meeting Act. You don't, the Texas Legislature complying with that, do you?
Well, that's unfortunate. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on how that all worked, so. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now with the questions, sorry, we had started the vote. I'm gonna start the vote um again, uh just for clarity's sake. Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, uh Charlie and Carrie for your work on this. Um item thirteen, discussion possible action regarding Austin Energy and recent communications about the system-wide inventory of utility poles within Rollingwood's jurisdiction, the locations and ages of critical infrastructure in the city of Rollingwood and the electrical grid information provided therewith, information about repairs within the jurisdiction of any Rollingwood tract, the amount of revenue generated from pole attachment fees, and the cost of servicing these poles on annual basis, anticipated tree trimming by its licensees, uh limited to permitted windows uh for trimming of oak trees. So I can tell you, uh you know, Amy uh has spearheaded a large part of this. Uh this was triggered in part by uh realization that we have the rights to request an audit uh of a number of these items. Um and then um one thing that I can assure you of is the city of or the, sorry, Austin Energy is not adhering to our windows for oak trimming. Um and they cited uh some uh issues with safety, which makes sense. Uh that said, they uh, Amber and our staff were uh diligent did an excellent job of making sure to document uh Austin Energy's um commitment to ensuring that uh any trimming of oak trees uh in and around our power lines during uh this prohibited uh portion of the year um would be treated with the utmost care. Austin Energy has assured us that they will notify uh the individual property owners and will also uh have all of their trimmers uh instructed to um properly seal uh any fresh cuts on uh oak trees that may be made uh during this process. With that, I'll open it up to uh Amy, if you'd like to uh set a framework for this uh and, or Amber, uh if you'd like to elaborate on anything that I've provided uh so far.
Um I can start to, uh we had Amber and myself um and I'm forgetting everybody who was on the call now. I'm sorry. I'm forgetting everybody who was on the call now. I'm sorry. You can remind me ever. We had a good call with Austin Energy. Jonathan Miller was on it too from Utility Commission. Thank you. Brain. And they went through. A lot of good information that's pretty self explanatory if you look at the slides that are in the packet. So. One of the highlights was in the in talking about the circuits. Was just understanding that there's three different substations that feed into Rollingwood. And that they have been evaluated the the fire risk. In each of those substation areas. And that's how they're deciding how to prioritize which areas are having vegetation trimming right now. And later in the slides, there's also a really great map that I'm kind of sad that Gavin's not here to see. Showing the high risk fire areas surrounding us. It's a really great visual for why we've been talking about fire risk. Anyway. I I I thought I thought that was helpful. We did have. So there's just a lot of given good information there. I think we were able to get some. New. Information over to Austin Energy about. Who to contact when the electricity goes out to subs to our lift stations and. Some other things like that that I think in the future will be helpful. There was one, they did indicate that they can run a report for us on the different reasons for the power failures that they've tracked. By location and then start evaluating what might be causing those. And that's one of the items that I have on my action list to maybe ask. Amber to follow up on next is to have them start looking at. Running those reports for all of our lift stations and then any other problem areas that we might have had neighbors report. Where we know that there's. More frequent power outages and that that's something that in the future. If residents are. Frequently experiencing power outages at random times in certain areas, if if we can start getting that information as a city. That's something where we can then. Amber can then request that they that Austin Energy run a report and they they track. The reason for each of those outages. It's either vegetation or animals or weather or what was the other thing? Interference and then potentially be able to look at focusing improvements to the infrastructure in those areas where. We can figure out what the cause is. So that was that was helpful. And then. The final thing that. I would say. That I think is still left open in my mind. Well, there's a couple of things, but prioritizing the things that are left open. I we I know that the city of Austin. Council took action several months ago to authorize their city manager. To work on the renewal contract. For with all of their entities. That like the city of Rollingwood that receive service. And we still haven't seen that renewal contract, but I think that it might be worth the city spending a little bit of time. Considering what types of things we might want to ask for in that contract that we haven't asked for in the past that might help with collaborating. And things like getting. Annual vegetation trimming and being able to schedule that. And I think that that's one of the reasons that's important too is because. One of the more interesting things that came out during the Austin Energy presentation. When we were when we started talking, when I started asking questions about how we would get notice about when they would want to start planning to cut trees in the city. So that we could make sure we coordinate. On issues like oak wilt oak wilt and other things. And they said, well, you'll know when we're in your city because. We will communicate with your HOAs and then your HOAs can inform your residents. And we said, we don't have. An HOA that's going to inform our residents. I I do believe over there in the Tremont little section, there might be a an HOA. But the reason that we as a council then received the letter is because. They don't necessarily have a way to communicate. With. Residents that's not through HOAs. So I think that when we get our renewal contract, we may need to put a little bit of time into establishing contractually. A communication channel from the city of Austin. Local government office. It's ironic. That's what it's called. To our city. That doesn't require them to go through an HOA. So. That's something that's kind of on the horizon. But yeah, I I would say that the biggest thing is is the the tree trimming thing, I think. Being able to start collaborating with that and I appreciate the staff and everything that they've been doing with that. And then I think if we can start identifying some of these problem spots and then. See what work we can get them to do. To actually address. Like more persistent power issues that aren't necessarily weather related.
Appreciate that. It's a really good synopsis and you're right. There's a lot of really good information in the presentation. That was provided. Staff, Amber specifically. What are you thinking as far as follow ups and next steps?
Yeah, I think just regular. Meetings with Austin Energy to just make sure we're. Developing that relationship and and working with them. They gave us good information about, they wouldn't exactly tell us. About the grid, but they gave us a good idea of, you know, which. Which circuit or I don't I can't think of the terminology right now, but which one was primarily. Responsible for our lift stations. But I don't really have anything else to add to what Amy. Said and then I I'd be looking for any direction that she would want to give council would want to give to me to follow up next steps.
Okay, well. Amy, as far as specific next steps. What do you want to do?
I I would just say that if Amber could, I don't know that we in motion or if I do, I can say it, but I think to follow up with them on. They offered during the meeting to run reports on the different reasons for electrical outages over the last, however many years they can do it. And I would say choose the lift stations and then if there's any other locations that you all happen to know about or that the works knows about. Related to more persistent. Electrical outages that maybe. Have have been larger impacts. And I would I would say that also I know that the neighbors over. On Vance. Who were out of power for the longest during the storm. I think it would be helpful to ask about that area. And then I also heard about some neighbors, I believe it was ever on. Shoot, maybe Park Hills. I'll I'll follow up with you on that one.
Do you ask the neighbors? Do you think, I'm sorry, do you do you think that? Do you think there's an intelligent way for us to ask for these reports that would? Maybe suggest the rhyme or reason as to. You know, why one house. Maybe maybe a corner, but maybe just singularly a house such as these guys on Vance would lose power. Whereas, you know, the other side of the street or even a next door neighbor might not. Is there an intelligent way, you think, based on your conversations with them for us to get a better understanding as to? The interconnect interconnectivity of of that of that grids that we can maybe. Maybe help solve for their problem?
I I feel like what they offered to us was they would run reports on specific locations first. I think if we do that, then we might get some data that would help us. The bigger picture, but I I didn't, I I think I have a couple of ideas about ways that we could request. The entire grid, but. I would say right now with just developing the relationship, perhaps getting. Initially, just getting those reports. The the specific problem areas. And then if we become aware, if if residents want to report other ones that they are aware of. I because I do think, well. I'll just, I'll say that I I do think there's some other, maybe when we get into the contract negotiation. I think that might be a space where we could go into executive session and potentially. Have some. Security based conversations and also get advice from Charlie on that.
So you were you were. I think you were picking up what I was laying down. I'd really like to have a greater understanding of kind of where our deficiencies are specifically before we walk into that. Negotiation. With the paperwork and I don't know how much my negotiation will end up being, but it would certainly be worthwhile, I think, for us to have a better understanding. You know, why we're kind of facing these service challenges the way we are. So perhaps perhaps a way to do it is hit these problem areas if they're willing to run limited reports, perhaps we could put. You know, maybe regions together. We already have regions designated and I know necessarily arbitrary to 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 apply to this, but we have drainage regions. So it would be very little work for the staff to. You know, send a map over and say, can you provide us a report on? Area one, area seven, you know, and and kind of maybe work our way through that. Is that something you think that that would be helpful or you think we should take a more targeted approach to it?
I I think, I mean, Amber could send over a request that they run a report on every power outage that's happened for the last five years and where it happened and give us information about. The cause of it and see if we could get that information. And in lieu of that, if that's not possible, then we could send over requests for regions, which would be a little bit. And then also specific target points. So do you want to try it that way?
I think, yeah, I think that's probably, that's a smart strategy. Ask for the whole thing first and if they're going to force us to break it down. We'll break it down and then we'll just be consistent on on our requests for, you know, the next area. That makes sense? I like that idea. Well done, Amy. Thank you.
That was a good, I'm glad we talked it through. That's what council meetings are for.
There we go. Amber, do you think you've got a little bit of clarity on that on on how to proceed on that?
I do. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, council, is there any? Anything else we want to discuss on this item or any additional action we want to take? All right, not hearing any then, and I will move on to item fifteen, discussion of possible action to move the August regular city council meeting to Wednesday, August twenty fifth. It's my understanding. That as scheduled, we are likely to have conflicts with. The start of school. Is. And any number of other things that August is a big month for most folks. And it's also going to be right in the middle of our budget season. So. I appreciate. I appreciate staff really trying to get ahead of this and presenting this in in plenty of time to make a make adjustments. Council, what do we think? How do you fancy? Is the twenty fifth better for folks? We got a whopping four Wednesdays. In August. We're going to move it to the last one.
I mean, I'm just so thankful my kids are going to go back to school. It's gonna be like. The most amazing, it's going to be, it's going to be amazing. Like I'll get more stuff done. So like.
If you have jinxed us. We're going to roll this tape back, Wendy.
I'm just saying, I'm okay with having a city council meeting on the first day of school because it's actually going to give me more time to do something. But I appreciate you changing it, thinking of it the first day of school, but like for me, I would. It's not necessary. But if it lines up with the budget calendar that's already set up, I am good with it too. I can I can meet. On April, August twenty fifth.
Staff. And do we have, is there a? Reason that we're trying to move this that would alleviate pressures on any of the work that you're doing?
We were just following, that's what we did last year for the budget calendar and because that is the first day of school, we assume that that would be. Best for the council, but I don't think it would it would mess anything up in our budget calendar if we didn't move the date.
What do you think, Sarah, Amy? Preference?
It's no difference to me.
Whatever works best for the schedule so that we don't have to have extra budget meetings. It's great.
Agreed with that.
All right, well. And. Gosh, I'm not allowed to. I don't think I can take executive action to move it to the twenty fifth, but.
I would move to move the August regular city council meeting to Wednesday, August the twenty fifth.
All right, we have a motion.
I second it.
Thank you, Wendy.
So just not to be contrary here, but. If it doesn't really make any difference to any of us that are here. Right now. Do we have to make this decision tonight or could we find out if it makes a difference for Gavin or Buck? Before we voted? And do it next month?
I mean, I don't, I don't suppose that's a problem.
Well, it's just, it's nice to know and because then we have our budget calendars that. And we, you know, staff uses that on a daily basis to as they're as we're working through the budget. I know that Buck has things with his kiddos. I I know that the first day of school, you're often doing things at night and you're taking pictures and. And I'm assuming that this year will be an even. You know, bigger celebration. So I think. I mean, I think they'd be on board with that.
I I'm fine with going ahead and just setting it now so that y'all can also schedule vacation time. In view of it because. If we wait a whole other month, then that's another month that you have to wait to see when that time might be available.
That. That's wild to think that we're allowed to take vacations now.
It is wild and I do know that Buck normally does have a lot more stuff because of. Having more kids that are in sports and other things.
Okay, well, we have a motion. We've had discussion. I'm going to ask for the vote. Wendy? Sarah? Amy?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Our August meeting will be on the twenty fifth. Again, council or staff, I appreciate you. Guys staying ahead of that for us. So. Here's the news, the doozy, Ashley sixteen, discussion possible action to approve a. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget calendar. And budget season, my favorite.
It's here.
Has Gavin given his thumbs up? On the calendar?
We have not met with Gavin on it yet. This mirrors last year's budget, budget calendar, and then, of course, it's very subject to change, I think. With all the new rules based on public hearings and things like that, it it kind of changes pretty frequently and we try to bring it back as often as that happens, so.
Okay. Sarah, are you over there? If I make a motion? I don't want to break for him. Okay. I would move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty. Well, do we do we need to approve it tonight?
It's helpful.
We're just basically setting the standard, same reason, vacation.
That's right. It's helpful.
And I would move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget calendar.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion. Not hearing any, Wendy?
Hi.
Sarah? Amy?
Hi.
Wow, my brain just stopped working for a fraction of a second there. It was awkward. Sorry about that. Seventeen discussion and sorry, update discussion, possible action to pass a resolution. We are going to trim this language down. I've been saying this for a long time. Tell you what, on item seventeen, Amy, Wendy, transportation, folks, do we have updates on South Mofak expansion?
Wendy and I had a scheduled. Uh, Wendy and I had a scheduled meeting with, um, Gunner from Bickerstaff and the engineer. And we worked through a couple of questions that the engineer had. Um, he's going to then, based on kind of some of the responses we gave. He's going to continue evaluating the three. Uh, alternatives that are the what, the most likely scenarios. And then, um, we have another follow-up meeting after he gets some analysis of that to review his findings.
As well as the BK intersection.
Oh, right, and the BK, yeah, yeah. So that was really good. I, I feel good about the progress we're making. We don't really have much, um, information other than maybe a fall. Maybe a fall open house from CCRMA, um, but nothing definitive.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for that. And we look forward to figuring out what, uh, or seeing what Gunner, uh, has, uh. Has come up with. Wendy, do you think you, uh, might have something, uh, tangible for us to take a look at?
I don't know the answer to that. I, it sounded like he had maybe another week. He had some.
Said another couple of weeks. Yeah.
Okay.
So it gave us more time that they were going to put it off until, um, fall of twenty twenty-one instead of spring twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll follow up and ask if we can have something for the June council meeting.
Make sure that we get this in front of, uh, the, the reason I, I say that, guys, you know, you know, the, the members of our community. Um, and, you know, they, they know plenty of folks. And if members of our community are once again aware that we're having this discussion. You know, more people involved, the better kind of thing.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's the only reason I bring that up, but thank you very much. Um, uh, yeah, item eighteen. Uh, this is a BK improvement project with Tex dot. Should we consider, can we consider, uh, not having this standing considering that they have now pulled. Uh, any potential funding for the next five years?
We could, we could pull it in the future. Um, we do have now the, the project they've committed to do with the.
True.
Um, the high water detection. So we could, we could just have that on there whenever, as we need it. Um, I would just say that the other thing I would, other information I have is I did have a call with Commissioner Howard last week. And we did talk about transportation and one of the things she asked. Kind of what the status was that we understood on BK. So I gave her that status. Um, and the thing I asked for help with was finding out who the new district engineer is. And that if she has the opportunity, when she meets with that person to find out what's on that person's priority list. Cause it seems to change each time we get a new district engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if she could inquire about the status of the BK's road project with regard to the new district engineer's priority list. That would be helpful. And if, once, once she's able to do that, then we're, hopefully we would follow up again. And I also then had. Um, the transportation staff from Travis County reached out to me. To ask me more so that they could then also go inquire about the status of the project. So we may have information back from one or both of those groups. Um, and I can, I can wait and see if I have the information. If I do, I can put an agenda item on then. Um, and if I don't, then we could remove it.
All right. Well, uh, again, appreciate the, the updates on, on those items. Um. Actually, keep me honest, we skipped around a little bit. Uh, is there anything that we've missed?
I think we covered everything.
Okay, great. Um, for the sake of anybody, uh, on, that is stuck with us. Uh, there are a number of folks that are stuck with us. Uh, Phil, Kevin, Whitney, Patina, Diana. Um, a very sincere thank you, uh, Sarah. Um, Ash, uh, thank you very much. Um. You know, none of us like to do this in a bubble and, um, we just appreciate the fact that. Yeah, even if you just put us on mute and, uh, you know, started watching some television, thanks for at least making us feel like, uh, somebody cared enough to stick around. Um, in any case, uh, for what it's worth, we do have reports, items nineteen through twenty-nine. Uh, available for review should anybody choose to, uh, take a look. Uh, in the meantime, uh, thank you all. Um, staff, council, uh, for, uh, taking the time and all the effort put forward getting this meeting done. Um, if there's nothing else, uh, let's see if we want, uh, an adjournment. Oh.
Oh, do adjourn.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Move to adjourn. How do you feel? Sarah, you want that second?
Second.
There we go. All right. All in favor? Cheers, thumbs up.
Okay.
All good. Right on. Okay. Uh, thanks, everybody. Happy, I've all, I'll have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.